Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five school committee meeting to session and could rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
What another pet.
If we could begin with Katrina reading the mission statement.
Falmouth Public Schools create world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you, Katrina. And Chris, could you read from our operating protocols?
Yes, of course. In our operations, honor the school committee's policy A, B, the people and their school district, which recognizes our roles and obligations as elected members of the community, remembering that we represent the entire community at all times. In our communications, work to build trust among, between and among school committee members, the superintendent, staff, students, parents, and guardians, and the town administration by treating everyone with dignity and respect. In our decision-making, engage in critical thinking, expecting all committee members to freely offer differing points of view as part of the discussion prior to making a board decision.
Thank you, Chris. I would need to read the recording statement. The meeting of the Falmouth School Committee is being recorded. In accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, anyone who wishes to make an audio or visual recording of this meeting must first notify the chair. Please raise your hand and make your presence known if you intend to record the meeting. Any recorders? Okay, thank you. Oh, that doesn't count for kids, though, who are going to do presentations, that's that's a given. Yeah, and then on Thanksgiving dinner, everybody can see the the whole family can see them, okay. One little shift in our agenda order of presentations is we're going to hold public comment till after the kids are finished, if you don't mind. Okay, so first we will hear from our student advisory. Hello there.
Recently, there was a food pantry opening at the high school, so it was Vip's Partners with Cape Kid Meals, and students can access through the Clipper Closet, so also receiving meals and then clothes if they're in need of that. And then from athletics, field hockey has won their last three games, and we have a home playoff game Saturday, so that's really exciting. And then boys soccer also has made playoffs, and there's senior nights tonight, so that's great. And then Powderpuff Game is coming up November twenty-third, so it's junior versus senior girls' flag football. So that's an exciting tradition, and that'll be later in the month. And then boys basketball gets to play at TD Garden in January, so it's a little bit far out, but that's really exciting opportunity for them, and tickets are on sale if anyone wants to be with the trip. And then Junior Work Day is November first. It's a great fundraiser for the class twenty-seven, the juniors, and it's on Saturday, so that will be great all around the community and then raising money for their class. And then FHS Theater Company Winter Calendar Raffle Supporting is coming up, so they're booster. If you haven't seen a play or musical, I definitely recommend, they're really, really incredible, they're so good. I've seen Little Mermaid, Grease, they're really, really good. And then an exciting opportunity, or for two years out, I guess. February twenty-twenty-seven, a trip to Senegal is an option for students, so they have an information session coming up this month, and hopefully that's popular interest, so Falmouth High School can send students.
Tonight I see a lot of potential customers for your junior work. So could you maybe turn around and tell them again when it is and what's available?
It's on Saturday, or this weekend, and it's yard cleanup, so you can volunteer and pay a price, but it's for the class, so they'll kind of clean up your yard or do like outside activities.
Do they rake leaves?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you very much for your report. Okay. Next we will next we will have a presentation on Morse Pond School Highlights.
Good evening, everyone, so we have presenters from grades five and six here tonight with the topic of science. So these are our young scientists, and they're going to share with you some of the work they've done up to this point in the year, including some field trips out into the field to study in our local ecology, and they actually brought one of their lab experiments too to show you. So we'll turn it over to our young scientists from Morse Pond, welcome.
This fall, we visited the Kuna Mesut River Greenway Heritage Trail and found to learn about how people can protect and restore the environment in their own community. The Kuna Mesut River.
Excuse me, guys, could you stand behind this table? That way your parents in the audience can see you better. Okay, is that all right? I mean, they, all they're seeing now is their backs. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, guys.
Yeah, right there.
Do you parents want to stand behind us if you want to record? Come on down, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Don't be shy. Would you mind starting over since I interrupted you? Thank you very much.
This fall, we visited the Kuna Mesut River Greenway Heritage Trail and found to learn about how people can protect and restore the environment in their own community. The Kuna Mesut River area used to be a mill site and later became a cranberry mine. Over time, people noticed that the river and the wildlife were not as healthy as they once were. Scientists, town workers, and volunteers worked together with the Kuna Mesut River Trust to restore the river.
They removed old dams, rebuilt bridges, and planted native plants. Now fish like hearing can swim upstream again, and many birds and animals have returned. Today, the Greenway is a peaceful place where people can walk, ride bikes, and explore nature. It's a great example of how a community can make a big difference for the environment.
During our trip, we became real scientists. We collected data to see how health healthy the river is. We tested the physical features, like how fast the water was flowing, how clear it was, and if it was cold or warm.
We also did chemical testing, including pH tests, to see if the water was too acidic or just right for plants and animals, and we did biological tests looking for macro and vertebrates, tiny water creatures like mayfly lar- larvae. That helps us know if the river is clean.
After our field trip, we worked in class to use our data to answer a big question. Is the Kuna Mesut River water exactly good or okay? We used what we learned in the science and wrote essays using a claim and evidence format to explain our thinking. Our claim was our answer to the question, and our evidence came from our data to obs- observations. In the field, we like to share a few short essays that show what we discovered about the Kuna Mesut River.
The water in the River Greenway is okay. My claim, the water in the River Way is okay, was correct. One piece of evidence is the pH level was six, which is okay. The second piece of evidence is the nitrate level was five, which is also okay. My third piece of evidence is the fact that the dissolved oxygen was five ppm. This, this also shows that the water level was okay. My fourth and final piece of evidence is the fact that we found damselfly larvae. Damselfly larvae are semi-sensitive to pollutants, indicating that the water level is okay. All of these pieces of evidence show the water level at the River Way is okay.
I predict that the Kuna Mesut River will be healthy because there there are different animals and plants. My first piece of evidence that shows the river was healthy that it, that the pH of the water was six. This is help, is a healthy pH. My second piece of evidence is that the nitrates of the water were five, which is a good amount of nitrates. The last piece of evidence that shows the river was healthy was that the dissolved oxygen in the river, this is import- important for animals to live. Based on the evidence, my claim was right that the Kuna Mesut River was healthy.
Our hypothesis about the Kuna Mesut River is that it is excellent because of the vegetation we see. One piece of evidence we found is that there is a lot of organisms in the vegetation. Another piece of evidence is how the trees provide shade to cool the water. The last piece of evidence is the pH was measured to be six. Seven is the best, so the pH was good. Based on the three pieces of evidence, our hypothesis is right. The river is healthy.
This project helps us meet both science and science standards, and science with other people can we use the impact on the environment. In writing, we practice importance and experience writing. Use, we start skills and nature, or teams clear evidence just to call our ideas. We also learned that science doesn't just happen in classrooms. It happens in our own community. We learned that when people work together, scientists, students, and community members, we can help nature recover and thrive.
Good evening. We are sixth graders from Morse Pond, and we've been studying density in science class. Density tells us how much matter is packed into a certain space. And it helps us explain why something's floating or sinking. Tonight, we are going to show you some hands-on experiments and tools we've been using to understand density.
First, we learned how to calculate the density of an object using this formula. Density equals mass by volume. We use a triple beam balance to measure mass. That gives us the amount of matter in grams. Then we use rulers, calipers, graduated cylinders, and overflow fans to measure volume. Or how much space an op- something takes up. Once we had once we had both measurements, we divided the mass by the volume to find the object's density in grams per cubic centimeter or kilograms per cubic centimeter.
Next, we learned about the difference, like the different liquids also have different densities. To explore that, we made a density column with their, with carefully layered liquids like corn syrup, water, oil, because each one has a different density. The density, the denser one sinks, sinks to the bottom, and the lighter one floats to the top. We also tested solid, solid objects and dropped them in and see where they end up. For example, a grape might float to the top of one layer but sink in another.
Finally, we connected on what we learned about density to the, to real-world science forum. Yesterday, my dad, who is a scientist, came to talk to our class about ocean pollution and how plastics break down in the environment. He brought samples of plastic trash and how he collected from the beaches and with that sinks. We measured the density of each plastic piece to identify what type of behavior in the ocean and how to design better materials that cause less harm to the environment. Different kinds of plastics. And how some plastics fade over time. All of these activities helped us see science in action instead of just reading about it. Doing these experiments using real-world tools and working together made learning about density exciting and meaningful. Thank you for letting us share what we've been working on in Morse Pond Science, Sixth Grade Science Lab.
Would you field some questions from school committee members? Anybody have a question?
I just wanted to comment on the quality of that science research. That was incredible, and I feel like we have some serious scientists among you. I was very impressed. Thank you for coming and sharing it.
Could they just please introduce themselves? Yes.
Oh, that'd be good, yeah.
Student introductions, if you guys could come up to the mic, say your name and what grade you're in.
You could just say it loud, louder.
I'm Porter Kaiser in sixth grade.
I'm Frank Gara in sixth grade.
I'm William Ready in sixth grade.
I'm Gavin Woods in sixth grade.
Can you tell us your name?
I'm Benjamin Mountain Kennedy in fifth grade.
I'm Max Humphrey in fifth grade.
I'm Winnie Grant in ninth.
I'm Lila Vissam in sixth grade.
I'm Lumpy.
I'm Sophia Dobell, I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Leah Porto, I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Brian Mumpie, I'm in sixth grade.
I'm Fiona in sixth.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, I'm assuming that the sixth graders also went to Kuna Mesut Farm, but I, I mean, I just, Kuna Mesut River last year, is that true? Yeah, so every fifth grade gets to go? Yeah, that's so wonderful.
I want to know if any of you girls are going to be presenting what the sixth grade has presented, since we don't have boys presenting this year.
Come back and show us your experiment?
Yeah.
Mr. Lumpy, do you have any?
I look forward to seeing that.
Yeah, for the, for the sixth graders, I was wondering if there's anything you found out that was surprising to you?
These green beads float on the wire and not mesh foil, but then there are silver and gold beads float on it. Corn syrup, yeah, on the corn syrup and not, and not the water, and that was kind of interesting. And then you have this piece of wood that would sink in water.
Oh, wow, that is surprising.
And for the fifth graders, I was wondering what your favorite part of your Kuna Mesut River trip was? If anyone, anyone wants to?
We actually went to, to see if we, I really enjoyed catching the creatures to, to discover if the level was bad, okay, or good. I think we also had a few flukes in that with, um, different groups having different, like, creatures found in different locations of the river. So we would have like different answers to each of our claims.
Thank you.
Anybody else have something to say?
I think the best part was doing all the
Come on up. Come on up.
I think the best part was doing the chemical testing. I have fish at home, so I am a good chemical testing, so it was fun to do it in the river.
Well, I would say the best part, I was there, was that the part where we went to go look for the, the Michael surveys, and while we were grazing in the net and dumping them into a bucket of water to get caught, we all, my group caught a baby eel.
Well, thank you, guys. Thank you. We learned a lot.
Even with all the stuff, I think that most groups either caught, um, like, um, sensitive or semi-sensitive creatures to pollutants in this, like, uh, in all sections, not just one or two.
Thank you.
We have quite a group of scientists in our little town. Okay, um, now we're going to call a recess because we will be, um, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There's a lot on the agenda, I guess I'm trying to hurry things up, sorry.
So the Mass, Massachusetts Association for School Superintendents annually picks a, one person out of the senior class. So this year, I, and I have the great honor to do that for Falmouth. This year, I have selected Rema, associate. I have had the honor to get to know Rema, and this is a well-deserved honor. So I'm going to hand this to you, and I'm going to have you hold it while I get to, to share a little bit about you. So this is where, lots, lots of stuff, so this is pages long, everyone. She's a pretty special person. One of the things that always strikes me about Rema is that she is so talented and creative, but academically she soars as well, so it's in, in both languages.
I'm sorry, Lori, can I, Lori, can I just? You can turn.
This way?
Thank you so much.
It's very hard to figure out where to stand. All right, so I'm going to just start with languages. She achieved the seal of illiteracy in French. She, her experience that she has shared, and I think she enjoys quite a lot, is her internship at the Falmouth Art Center. She assists students, teaching clay camps and art classes, and then planning crafts for the kids. She also is an assistant to the clay studio, and she is the kids' party planner. All right, so that's, that's fun stuff. Now we're going to get to some of her academics. Rema has taken five AP courses in eleventh grade, and she is currently in five AP courses as a senior. That is quite a lift. So last year, she scored fives in four of the five APs and a four in the other ones. Quite an accomplishment. Her extracurricular activities, she enjoys the Falmouth High School Theater Company. She has been named roles in the fall plays and the spring musicals. She is in sausage. Good luck for you to sing for us. She is in the clay and stain glass internship. She's a mentee artist. She is in the cro- crochet club. Now, I have to say, that is a very growing and popular, um, club at Falmouth High School, I hear. How many students are?
It, it varies, but we usually get like six-ish.
Yeah. And we have a, a staff member that loves to crochet that has become the advisor. So this is very exciting. She is, she's a volunteer, she tutors in math and French. And now I'm going to list the honor societies. She is an inducted member of the Art, French, Math, Science, the Triumph, and the National Honor Societies. Her awards that she has achieved, in two thousand and twenty-three, she had the Silver Key Award in Printmaking at the Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards. In two thousand and twenty-four, honorable mention in mixed media at the Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards. Honorable mention in mixed media for Congressional Art Show. She's third place in printmaking at the League of Women Voters Voting Contest. And she is Best in Show for Mixed Media, first place for Crochet Sculpture, first place for Ceramics, first place in Painting, and third place in Mixed Media at the Barnstable County Fair Youth Art Show. In two thousand and twenty-five, she placed first in Printmaking, honorable mention in Mixed Media at the Schol- Scholastic Arts and Writing Awards, Presidential Choice Awards in Printmaking at the National Art Educators Association. She has won the Harvard Book Award, the RIT Art and Design Award, and the J.S. Lim Foundation Math Award. She had the highest math grade in the class of two thousand and twenty-six. And it still gets more impressive. In her first three years of high school, she has a GPA of four point oh in all three years, and I can't imagine that that's going to change at any time during, during this year. There's there's something else special that I, I want to do. She, very unusual, the Falmouth Cultural Center, she is a student representative. She went before the Select Board and was named to the Cultural Center Council by the Select Board, and they wrote a little something that I want to, I want to share. Very proud of you. Rema became a member of the Falmouth Culture Council in September twenty, twenty-four. She has actively participated in the council's most important function of the cultural council, its grant review and decision-making process. She advocated for what Falmouth's youngest, youngest student residents want in their cultural programming, which made a significant impact on how the cultural now evaluates the applications. Rema acts as a liaison to several of the grantees. When interviewed by the Falmouth Select Board for the Falmouth Culture Council seat, Rema articulated her interest in serving a two-year term on the cultural council in the following way. As a child of first-generation Armenian immigrants, I would like to bring to the council an appreciation of the importance of cultural programming. Rema is a student panelist for a presentation on civic engagement in Wood's Hole. She spoke persuasively and authentically about how important it has been to her to be a voting member of the cultural council. Rema is talented as an artist, plotter, actress, and musician, along with excelling in her academic classes. During a difficult cultural council meeting, she remarked, "This is like high school." She lightened the mood and allowed the adult members to laugh at themselves. Rema has a great sense of humor. Her smile lights up the room. She brings common sense and an uplifting spirit to everything she commits to doing. I couldn't agree more. Congratulations, Rema.
Uh, no, honestly, thank you so much. I've been so honored to be a member of the Falmouth Public Schools, especially with how I've been able to outreach within the community through the cultural council, but also just through the events we have at the school. Honestly, Falmouth is such an amazing public school experience. I've had an amazing thirteen years.
That is great to hear. I think you have some special people here, can you invite them up? And you can introduce everyone?
Uh, this is my mom.
It's so nice to meet you. What an amazing daughter you have. And we've met. Yes?
And my younger brother.
Younger brother, hi. You have something you'd like to present? Thank you. Picture? Yeah, of course. I would absolutely love to join you. Oh, well, thank you. So now, um, we have a reception for you. And so, um, if we may recess for a few minutes so that we can, um, go out, uh, out in the hallway for a reception.
Sue has something to say, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could we just ask you what your plans are for next year or what you're hoping to do?
Um, so I'm applying to like a variety of schools, but I'm thinking about majoring in art and math, hopefully a double major there. I wanna eventually go into art education, but I think that there is such a balance between the both of them that I really hope I can study both.
Congratulations, Rema. So we're gonna take a few minutes break to have a reception outside, so we'll be back. Hold those slots.
In the meeting, that was so much fun out there we didn't want to come back, but here we are. So, moving along, the next item on our agenda will be public comment. I'll read you our statement about public comment. Public comment will be limited to 20 minutes. Where's the clock?
Right here.
Right there.
In front of Kelly.
Okay, it's in front of Ms. Welch over there. Public comment will be limited to 20 minutes. Members of the public are welcome to speak during public comment. Comments will be limited two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting, a lot of the committee cannot respond or act on public comment. Additional comments and feedback can be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12ma.us.
Can I just make a little statement? Please bear with me with the clock. I'm doing the best I can, just bear with me, I'm still kind of new at it. Thank you.
Okay, so the first person on our agenda to speak is Megan Zatoli.
Hi, Megan, I live at Carriage Shop Road. I'm asking you not to strike the protective language from policy JICA as written and recommended by MASC attorneys. This sentence, "The responsibility for the dress and appearance of students will rest with the individual students and their parents or guardians," is a cornerstone of students' rights and parent authority in Massachusetts public education. It also protects the school and district from potential legal action. This language exists to ensure that legal policy aligns with both the DUCI and settled state court state case law, including Pyle versus School Committee of South Hadley, which upheld students' rights to determine their own dress and expression in federal court. Removing this clause erodes those protections and shifts power away from families without any public process or educational justification. JICA's original language reinforces partnerships between schools and families. It says that schools can set reasonable limits, but that the primary responsibility for a child's appearance belongs with those who know the child best, their parents and guardians. Striking that sentence sends a troubling message, that we as a district believe government authority should override family judgment and student individuality. The clock's not going, just so you know.
I know.
Before any such removal is even considered, there must be a non-biased legal review, a stakeholder survey, public hearing, and select board town vote. Transparency matters. Policy built in haste or under pressure creates distrust and can expose the district to unnecessary legal risk. Protecting MASC's language is about upholding rights. It's about respecting families and ensuring that our schools model fairness and constitutional integrity. I urge you to keep the language intact and reaffirm our commitment to civil liberties, family partnership, and student respect. This was your promise to our community as elected officials. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. The next person on our list is Maureen Nolan.
Hi, I actually just signed in because I thought I was supposed to sign in just to be a visitor, but I did come because I wanted to know a little bit more about the Lawrence School and I was instead of just how many kids can fit in it or which, you know, what the configuration for it. I was hoping that there would be a redesign to that school so it would more reflect the middle school psychology and needs rather than an old high school. But I also wanted to thank you for, thank the school for bringing their wonderful children here. I'm a member of the Kunamasa River Trust and I was just thrilled to hear the children relate what they learned at the river and I was happy to be one of the instructors down sitting in the river waiting for them to come. So this was a joy, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the list is Deanne Rockwood.
Kristine.
Just give me a minute, Deanne.
Yeah. I'm going to put this down too because I am going to say it's hard even to hear you, Terry, right there, the acoustics tonight are not so terrific.
Oh, okay.
I'm just mentioning that, so I don't, I don't know. I'm usually pretty loud, so.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that right now. I got 20 minutes, Mr. Lumpen?
I think that's a time in military time.
See what I'm saying?
You thought it was me.
I do too, yeah.
Thank you, Deanne Rockwood. Jeffrey Lane, East Falmouth. At the sixth and final meeting of the Building Needs Task Force on June 16th, a recommendation was made to the school committee. Included in their vote was to implement an early learning center in the 2028-29 academic school year in order to provide ample time to reconfigure boundary lines, bus routes, program distribution, and allowing time for family and faculty input. Chairwoman Nancy Taylor was concerned about pushing this too quickly, hence the three-year timeline. This past summer, your committee assured us that we would hear pros and cons of proposals, yet that's not how things have played out since September 30th. There were more questions than answers at that meeting and a request once again for staff, families, students, and experts to weigh in. So when can we expect you to follow through on your promises? I am not against change, and in fact, I include myself among those who will be strongly affected by any of what is proposed, be they grade level restructuring, building shifts and renovations, or federal and state budgetary cuts. However, as a staff member, neither my experience, knowledge, thoughts, or opinions are included in your plans. Talk about your stakeholders. I guess I shouldn't be surprised by this, as my colleagues and I are working without a contract for the second time in three years. In fact, this is the only superintendent in my 16 years of employment with whom I've ever had this experience. In spite of our importance, both to district success and that of the students, staff does not receive the same set of urgency from this administration as the irrational push to put these unbalanced presentations to an immediate and piecemealed vote. I wish you all cared about our contracts as much as you care about the Navigate the Future timeline. After all, you will need us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deanne. The next person on the list is Eric Gura. Oh, okay. Next on the list then would be Laurel Smith.
All right, also, it's not like it was just assigned and I did send out a letter to everyone, but since my name was called, I guess I'll just highlight a couple of things. My letter.
Excuse me, for the record, could you say your name and address?
Laurel Smith, 15 Dearborn Avenue.
Thank you.
I have two children, one in Morris Pond and one at Mullen Hall. And my concern is why are we pushing forward votes to eliminate two schools? We'll be losing accreditation for two K through eight schools if we go forward with some of these plans. We are, most of the students, over half the students are not meeting academic expectations in all the subjects that are tested, and I don't see how eliminating schools and combining classes and having less space is going to improve academic outcomes for our students. We also have lower enrollment, but the number of students with special needs has vastly increased over time, and those students need a lot more space, and we're currently utilizing almost all of their space in our schools. So how can we possibly accommodate all those students that are legally mandated to have special spaces for tutoring and other services where they're being pulled out of their classes? And I'd like to just be clear as to why we are doing this. If it's financial, we need really clear delineations of what is the budget shortfall? And are there other options other than closing schools? And how is this benefiting our students? Because I don't see how it could possibly benefit our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Laurel. Next on the list is Dominique Kirk.
Dominique Kirk, Parker Road, that's what you want?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm here tonight to ask for the third time. Where did all the kindergarten school choice children end up for the 2025-2026 school year? When I got involved last fall, it came to our attention, all school choice children were enrolled at North Falmouth. There were so many school choice kids that a fourth kindergarten classroom needed to be added. Certain schools are lacking in enrollment, creating an unfair learning environment with only two sections per grade. So if we know this, we recognize this is an issue. Where did the 2025-2026 school choice children end up? This is just another example of our questions not getting answered. Thank you.
Okay, next on the list is Amanda McGonigal.
Hi, Amanda McGonigal, Edgewood Drive in Falmouth. So I wanted to come here just so that I could get on the record that decisions are being made without the answers that parents and staff have asked for and without the answers that members of this school committee have asked for. So the Building Needs Task Force, who we continue to commend for their tireless and thankless work, recommended moving forward with the Lawrence proposal but delaying other discussions until 2028. Yet again, we're disregarding this advice, why? Ms. Welch and Ms. Mederos have asked questions about the surveys done in the past. I know multiple members have asked for new surveys to be done. I've asked for surveys to at least be done correctly, and that hasn't been done. You asked for that and you still haven't received it, but you're still moving forward. We paid a facilitator months ago to host a forum promising answers to our questions, but we never got them, those answers never came. At that meeting, Ms. Souza mentioned moving fifth down to the elementaries. Weeks ago, Katrina requested an unbiased presentation on moving fifth grade down to the elementary schools, just as you did for eighth grade moving up. You had principals in there. Where are the PK through five teachers being invited here, just like you had Doc Harris and the middle school principals, to talk about the benefits of moving fifth into elementary? By not having them, you're not even pretending to take all options into consideration. You've contradicted yourselves with what the MSBA requires. First, it was they only needed to know how many grades, now it's they need to know exactly which grades. Why are you settling for this as a committee? Why are you rushing ahead without the information that you have asked for? I understand the appeal of moving the eighth grade into the high school. We just got my daughter's MCAS scores back, she had a perfect score in her ELA. She would probably benefit from going into the high school and taking advanced classes, but the thing is, is she can do that now if she were a student at Lawrence. She can go to the high school and take advanced curriculum if she needed that or if she wanted that. Same thing with kids in sports, they could sign a waiver. You've asked many questions, but you're not waiting around for the answers before you're making decisions? You can't just stop at asking the question, you have to get uncomfortable and stand your ground and wait for the answer and then make a decision.
Thank you, Amanda. And that would be the end of our public comment. Thank you all for taking the time and energy to get up in front of us and give your opinions. Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation of Falmouth Public Schools Partnership with Cape Cod, Cape, Cape, Cape Cod, Cape Verde, and, there's too many capes in that, Cape Verde Museum and Cultural Center.
Two capes.
Two capes, that's right.
I'd like to introduce Barbara Bergo. Barbara, if you'd come down and sit down here. Barbara is here as representing one of our partners in this work. And we also have Carmella MASC that's also going to speak. There's three major topics we're going to talk about. One is the partnership that we have with our second grade students that all visit the museum, and also the cultural opportunities. And the cultural opportunities for the after-school program. In addition, we just had, as you'd heard previous from Mr. St. Julian and Dr. Teller about our sister school project and our visitors. Now we're going to talk about what their visit was like. So I'm going to turn it over to Barbara right now, but I'm sure that there'll be some interjections from everybody.
Okay, so I'm going to go quickly because Barbara's really the heart of this operation. So I'm just the person that's going to talk about curriculum and why we do this partnership and the bookwork part of it, and Barbara's going to talk about the heart of it. So basically, all of our second grade students go to the Cape Cod, Cape Verde Museum and Cultural Center, and there are two capes in it because there are two capes involved, Cape Cod and Cape Verde. So our second graders go, and the trip existed before I started, but Barbara and I have worked closely together to make it fit not only with the curriculum but also with the museum and also to allow more kids to come at one time. So our trip now in its current configuration has three sections. And the best part about this trip is that it doesn't, as much as I love science, those are my kids up there with fifth grade and sixth grade too, but there are other topics, obviously, other subjects. So the great thing about the Cape Verde Museum and Cultural Center trip is that incorporates science, math, and also social studies. So it covers all of those areas. So we break the kids up into three groups. A third of them go into the museum, and they learn about immigration, they learned about why people from Cabo Verde came here, what they did, their contributions to our community, and the fact that this mixing bowl or, I can't think of the other term, that we have, melting pot, that's what it is, that we have in our community and the diversity of all these different cultures coming together is one of our strengths. And so then, in our other activity, the kids actually play what we call in the United States here, Mancala. However, Mancala is actually another form of a game that originated in Africa, which is played pretty heavily in Cabo Verde. And so the kids learn that the Mancala version is different than the Cabo Verde version, and actually, if you go to Cabo Verde, depending on which island you go to, you're going to see different versions as well. Our guests had a different, right, Oriole, that's right, it's Oriole in Cabo Verde. So the kids come in and they play that, and the great thing about it is they think they're playing a game, but what they're doing is they're doing math and they're doing strategic thinking. So yes, they are having fun, but they're also learning about how different communities take something common and change it to fit their own tastes. And also, they learn math, and they don't even realize that they're doing math when they're trying to figure out where they should be moving their seeds. And then the third part, which Barbara runs, which is wonderful, is about the Tartarugas or the sea turtles, and the things that we have in common, because on the Cape, we're usually talking about sea turtles getting cold-stunned and being stuck here. They come over here to feed during the summer, they can't get out of Cape Cod Bay, much like myself, and they get stuck and they get cold-stunned, and we have to treat them and return them, whereas in Cabo Verde, they go over there to lay their eggs and hatch out. So they both, they live on both capes, but for different parts of their lives. So it's a good thing that sort of brings us together, but also shows how they can do one thing in one area and something completely different in another area.
Muito obrigada. Thank you very much, all of you. I, of course, am Barbara Bergo. I actually live right now in Brewster, but I am the co-founder and the curator of the Cape Cod, Cape Verde Museum and Cultural Center. I always start off saying, "Thank you, Falmouth," okay? I tried this in Taunton, where I lived all my life, and it kind of didn't go so easily. And I tried it in New Bedford, and they said, "You live in Taunton, you don't live here, so you do your thing in Taunton." I tried this in Harwich, and they don't understand the total commitment that it takes for a museum and the collaboration between the African and the Portuguese and the, you said Senegal? My ancestry just showed an update. I was 24% Senegalese eight years ago, and now I'm 42%. Cabo Verde, you must go to Cabo Verde, huh? So we are a mix. These days, they call it a salad bowl, right, rather than a melting pot? Because I don't really want to melt into you, I want to compliment you, right? So thank you for sharing with your students, with your staff, our beautiful salad that Falmouth has helped us make out. You should be proud to know, I only told you our little failures, because the Cape Cod, Cape Verde Museum and Cultural Center is the only museum completely focused on Cabo Verde and our diaspora in the entire state of Massachusetts. You helped us function here, just survive and then thrive. Laurie Dewar deserves a lot of credit, support, and my heart, a lot of my heart, because almost everything that I have wished for, she has helped come true. When we were going to Davisville Road, and we said, Rep. David Viera helped us. I don't think I wanted this kind of a building, I wanted the Smithsonian. Can't get that, but Falmouth, as you well know, gave us two years rent-free for us to be able to survive. It was right next to the school, East Falmouth Elementary School, so in real estate, you say, "Location, location, location." Laurie, I talked to the principal next door, Laurie, he said, "Maybe the kids could come over here for a field trip." Laurie, what do you think? And she said, "I think I'll do you one better than that." Every teacher and every school student in this school area will be able to come to this museum, and I think it has started to happen with Carmela's help and, of course, Henry and Sonya and all that have been involved. Not only did we get so far eight hundred students, they're all learning Tartaruga and Cape to Cape, but we also got some of your staff to Cabo Verde last year as the sister school program started to grow. ELL, English Language Learning School of Cabo Verde, it is Zita Viera who started this program. She graduated from Bridgewater State U, but you must know why she started this program. Her ELL CV program, because she said, "Coming here to Bridgewater State U," which also is the only school, college, university in the United States that now has a minor in Cape Verde studies. I graduated in 1969, I didn't even know anything about Cabo Verde. When they asked me what I was, I didn't know what to say. That's a horrible thing for a student to feel. So now they not only know, we celebrate Cabo Verde. So when Zita came here, she knew it was so hard to learn your studies while you're trying to learn the language, while you're trying to learn the culture. So she went back there and said, "I don't want to just be a professor teaching in the university, I would like to study Saturday School to teach these children English, because America is a great place for them to come and learn and grow and work and prosper." And she started 10 years ago with 15 students, she now has 450 students, two buildings full. And what did they say next, after two years of us getting, well, a year and a half of this program? Barbara, what do you want next? Because we're just starting a fledgling, and I said, "I would like a school that we could partner with in Cabo Verde to show the Cape to Cape program." Falmouth is the perfect place, you have a rich community of Cape Verdeans, and not only that, I use the big word, "Lucophone communities," because you're Brazilians and you're Portuguese, you're Azorians, some Miguel, and Cabo Verde, we are all Portuguese speakers, as you well know, my ESOL new friend, and Portuguese speakers love to hear anything And Portuguese speakers love to hear anything in their own language. One of the wonderful things that I saw as I went through the classrooms was as soon as Zita came in and said, "Bom dia." The kids looked up and they weren't just Cape Verdean kids, they were all sorts of kids. And they said, "Bom dia." And the quietest child got their bright eyes going. They were so enthused, like I am. You need to know that one of your students came to this program, this rich, fun museum program. And it's a museum where everybody can touch. I know we said, "We're going to go, we're going to go." This is on the wall at the museum for everybody to see. Last year, we had the Prime Minister of Cabo Verde. We won a Medal of Merit, first degree in culture from the Republic of Cabo Verde, from the government. And this is one of the things that I showed them. Pedro Pierce Institute, ELLCV, Falmouth Public Schools, and Cape Cod Cape Verdean Museum and Cultural Center. Of course, here's Laurie, of course, here's Henry. And his wife even came along with us that day to come celebrate. And what they say in Cabo Verde is, "We want to replicate this all over." I have to say to you, one of your students said this year, when she walked out of our museum, "This was the best day of my life." And I cried, you know? I learned about self-actualization, when you feel like you've made it. I've made it. A student came through our museum and it was the best day of her life. And what else I want you to know, the teachers had a grand time. Your staff treated them like they were dignitaries. I only brought 10, so I'll leave them on the table, what I was just printing when I came here. My treasurer and I went twice last year. We met the folks there in October and we had a nice couple of days of information before we had to get back. This year, we went back to Cabo Verde on the invitation of the Minister of Culture and Creative Industries. He would like us to replicate the museum and what we do there in Cabo Verde. Most of you know there are 10 islands. Last year, the rector, they say, the president of University of Cabo Verde invited us to show the military document that we did with FC TV, Cape Verdeans, a legacy of service, and your own Andrews folks were in it. We went there to show that. They want us to start a museum in the University of Cabo Verde. And so this year, we went back and you can take this if you'd like. This is the U.S. Ambassador to Cabo Verde, Jennifer Adams. I made a folder of information to tell her all the kinds of things we are doing here. And one of the most prominent things in our folder was the picture and information about ELLCV sister school programs. And what she did, Zita told me when she came here last week, "We got a visit from the U.S. Ambassador. She loves our school and our program and she's going to support us." And I said, "I think I know who told her about you." And then the other one is a set of photos from, information from the Minister of Culture. He's asked us to give him a budget. He will pay for us to go back there, teach not only about what we're learning here, in Falmouth especially, but also what we would like Cabo Verde to help us with. So your sister school program, zooming back and forth to Cabo Verde from Falmouth, has made Falmouth not only famous in Massachusetts. We are the second-only museum in the United States for Cape Verde in specific. And now you are international, because they are putting us on international TV. And it tells everyone in the world, from Luxembourg, who was supporting them, to Portugal, where I had a teacher today that Laurie spoke to, that wants to help, all the way to Rome, Italy. They are talking about this program and this school system. Muito obrigada. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We have any questions or comments? I guess we'll start with Chris.
I don't have anything at the moment. It's just an amazing, amazing story.
Were you not finished? I'm sorry.
Well, we have some pictures that we wanted to share with you of our trip. And you're going to see our...
Am I blocking anyone?
No, go right ahead.
Okay, you're good.
I was there.
If someone wants to narrate, any of you want to speak up? Just be narrating.
Go ahead, Sonia.
Well, when they arrived, we had a few different opportunities. The first night, we joined Barbara and Dr. Doerr for dinner. The second night, we went out for pizza. It was a very interesting opportunity. We're like, okay, yeah, not what we thought it was. But they wanted to know, they have so many students that travel to America and other countries and they're having these cultural experiences and they said, "We're supposed to be teaching them language and culture. We need these experiences." So you'll see a few of the different ones. This is just one picture we captured.
Who are the people in the picture? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So Principal Viera from North Falmouth is on the far left. Three of the teachers from ELLCV who came with Zita on the visit, so Darcelina, Nick, and, excuse me, no, I did it the wrong way. Vera, Nick, and Darcelina. And then, I was so excited to have my picture there. Just waving. Then on Saturday, they had a pretty big outing, Henry.
Saturday, Barbara, I could not keep up with Barbara. I'm going to tell you right now.
A few people went.
We went all over the place. But what you can see is Candia Rose is the woman on the far right. And here, she is, I want to say she's the mayor of New Bedford, but she doesn't have that title. But she really took us all over the place. Right there is where Ernestina is supposed to be docked, but right now, it's being, it's on...
Winter dry dock.
It's dry dock, dry dock. But so that's the location, so that's New Bedford. And the picture next to that, that's your museum. So we went from multiple museums, New Bedford, as well as visiting Barbara's museum.
Henry, let me just add on. So we have to say, we should say, the schooner, Ernestina Morrissey, okay? Only because it is the official vessel of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It was built in 1894 in Essex, Massachusetts, named the Morrissey, F.M. Morrissey, after the first captain's daughter. And then it last served as a Cape Verdean packet trade ship. We lovingly call her a Cape Verdean Mayflower. But as you probably know, Cabo Verde just got independence 50 short years ago. Thank you to the town of Falmouth. Also, the select board, they deemed July 2025 Cape Verdean Month in Falmouth, because our anniversary is July 5th. And so that room is dedicated to, so they repatriated the boat back to the U.S. They are working with, it is usually docked halftime in New Bedford, halftime now at Mass Maritime Academy. It is teaching the cadets. I worked on her in 2004. And they teach about the cultures, okay? So Inuit, Alaska has Cape Verdeans, and Whaling, New Bedford has Whaling and Cape Verdeans, Hawaii has Whaling and Cape Verdeans. And so we just, at least, even though she was in dry dock, we wanted to show the students where the Cape Verdean Mayflower has come. And so when she got here, Massachusetts took her on and she is the official vessel of Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Thank you again, Falmouth and Massachusetts.
And on the currency.
Yes, on the currency in Cabo Verde.
We continued, so on, here's the exhibit, right? This is also in New Bedford.
No, this one's...
No, this is in heritage.
We went everywhere. We hit Sandwich, we hit New Bedford.
So because of all of our news, so we've been in the front page of the paper and they talk about Falmouth, the Cape Cod Times, as well as the Falmouth Enterprise. And so people have heard from us everywhere. I heard you mention about cranberry bogs with the science program. You know, we were called the Cranberry Pickers. I always say we're so much more than that now. But this wonderful Heritage Museums and Gardens program was done because they had a huge donation of artifacts of cranberry. And so they had a whole cranberry exhibit. So I thought we would teach the students, the teachers from there. The youngest three were only 24 and 26 years old and never been to America before. So we got a free welcome by the Heritage Museum guys.
Yeah, actually, right, so two of the three had never left their island. So I mean, just the opportunity that they continuously said Barbara's educating us about our history, right, and making those connections.
This is at one of the Veterans Center in New Bedford. And we got to see Cape Verdeans as awards in that, in New Bedford. So that was, that was really impressive.
New Bedford has a huge parade every year, one of the largest for Cape Verdeans in the country. And I thought they should see, this is the Verdean vets. And so they are heralded, some of them are now 90 years old. This is one of the oldest clubs in America for Cape Verdeans. But they are, we herald them because, of course, they're American veterans.
So we were driving around, they saw the pumpkins and decorations for the season. They actually asked us if pumpkins are really orange or if those were decorations. So we introduced them to our pumpkins and we had an opportunity. So they were taught by Lawrence School students how to carve. So they took some time to carve. And then Representative Vera, Principal Vera welcomed them and provided a dinner for them on Sunday afternoon. So that was them preparing their lobster boil. And then on Monday, we headed out on the road. This is, we visited Bridgewater State. So as Barbara shared with you, Zita graduated from Bridgewater. The homecoming banner happened to be up on the road. I graduated from Bridgewater, so we had a little homecoming moment. But one of the beautiful things in the continuous conversation, and you can see here, President Clark, the current president of Bridgewater State University, on the right with Zita. And on the left is Angelo, the director of the Cape Verdean, the Pedro Pierce Institute for Cape Verdean Studies at Bridgewater State. Both having a moment together in the president's conference room, but really talking, one, about celebrating the amazing work that's being done, and two, asking what more, what next? So it was a great conversation. And from Bridgewater to Mass Maritime Academy. So talking about the opportunities and the connection to maritime, the relationship to the schooner Ernestina, and having an opportunity to visit the Cuffee Global Studies Center at Mass Maritime. So we had a little small group get-together and celebration after lunch.
Because Mass Maritime Academy reached out to us. People are now hearing what we're doing in Falmouth, so they're coming to Falmouth to learn from us. And they said, "There's not enough history about the schooner Ernestina timeline. There's much more about the F.M. Morrissey, not so much about Cape Verdeans." So we are considered some of the experts in the Cape Verdean history. So they came to meet with us at our little place in East Falmouth. The dean and Patrick Nobrega, who lives in Fall River, but he is Portuguese, speaks Portuguese. He said, "How can we get you to help us?" And I said, "You have to come to Falmouth. You have to come to the museum. The only way I'll help you is if you come see what we're doing here." And so they granted us this in the summer. Then they said, "What next?" Like everybody else. I said, "You have to go to Cape Verde. You have to go to Cape Verde and see who the people are that you are really talking about. We're not just cranberry pickers anymore." And so guess what? They came to Falmouth, they came to Falmouth twice, and now they're getting ready to go to Cape Verde.
What you can't tell there is that was the day of the torrential downpour. But we were just so happy to be together. This is a visit to Mullins. So Ms. Patyska, first grade teacher, who also traveled to Cabo Verde last year, is in the picture with Zita in the red suit coat and, again, the three teachers from ELLCV.
And they're showing off, there's something that they bought last year.
Yeah, so Ms. Patyska had purchased that at Sucopira, right? The large market in Praia, which is the capital.
Right, and I was the one who was surprised to see that. I participate in the after-school program. I'm lugging my drums in there and I'm tired and I look up and I go, "Wow! We got Cape Verde in the schools." You don't know how much this thrills me.
An opportunity, so you can see Barbara talking about all the books and the opportunities there in the picture on the right, a little walk down Main Street in the picture on the left. But we had a fabulous opportunity. Barbara had helped connect us with Sarah Hines and two authors, one of whom you can see here in person, who has a series. And then we also talked to one on Zoom who has her first book coming out, just a week, two weeks?
Books on Cape Verdean, you know, for youth. But what our museum and cultural center also has been doing for the schools, since you have done so much for us, we have been purchasing books with little small grants that we get and we've been introducing them to the schools.
And we thank you very much for those.
We thank you.
As we continue to move through the schools, this is a picture from the entrance at Lawrence School. I think one of the things from Zita's first visit with us is seeing "I am a Clipper" and kind of thinking through that. And so each time she comes, there's also just different places of how the schools are organized and how students function within the schools. And so these posters just really caught her attention. And, you know, there's a number of them in any of our schools. I passed a couple coming in the hallway. And this one's hidden behind the table.
And thinking about hallways, you folks would like to know, also, you really are helping even Cabo Verde in the symbiotic way. Because one of the questions that Zita had for one of your principals was, they had doors locked, they said they could lock from the inside. They are building a new school unit for Zita, so she doesn't have two separate buildings, one big one. And they were asking if she wanted locks on the inside of her doors. So now we've gone from a third-world country, when I was there '97, '98, for summer seminars abroad. Now they're a developing nation, they've come very far in 50 years, but they now really do have to pay attention to the safety. Like I was here for all of your lack of safety. So she asked your superintendent, your principal, whether it would be a good idea. And they really suggested, "Do it now, do it at the beginning, do it while you're building, because it will be very important. Keep your students safe." So she took his advice to heart and they're going to do that there. Thank you very much.
We had a chance to stop in and have different visits with students. So we happened to catch the Unified Basketball Game last week, which they repeatedly said was the highlight of their experience, visiting and seeing students. And then on the right, kind of a distant picture, I guess, but we had an opportunity to join with the student ambassadors at Falmouth High School in our English Language Development Program during Clipper time. And the meeting very quickly shifted into Portuguese. It was a very powerful conversation. And then they would stop and kind of talk to us a little bit English, catch us up, and jump right back in. But every student in the room was engaged and the whole conversation was led by the co-presidents of the student organization. So really powerful opportunity. And at the museum, spring in full circle, back with Barbara at the museum. And Barbara, do you want to talk a little bit about that beautiful quilt?
Zita, I had mentioned to them, they were here, they were cold. We had to, we offered some of our clothes, because they brought a little bit, but Cape Verde's 80 degrees, 90 degrees all the time. They didn't have scarves and gloves. So we shared that with them. I wasn't sure that there was one young man, so I have to say thank you to Sonia. Somebody said to the young man, "Well, where did you get that nice heavy coat?" It was her son's. So we just shared, you know? We shared everything. But then Zita loved, I said, "I got blankets, they were going to go to the game." And I said, "Well, I got little lap quilts. We do some quilting, we do some African quilting." I thought of the young woman who did all that art. And I said, "This is wonderful, I love it. They crochet beautifully in Cabo Verde." And I wanted to get started with some quilting. Sonia's going to take sewing classes with me soon. But Zita was thrilled when she saw this one. She said, "We've got enough clothing for the game, we're not that cold." But this was butterflies on one side. And she said, "I love teaching the kids about, you know, metamorphosis and, you know, I love butterflies." But then I told her, "Oh, no, I had made it for my little niece, I never really finished it to give her, she's grown." On the other side, it was words in English to talk about the snail and the car and the worm and those kinds of things. And so she took, I finished it and took, she took it back with her to Cabo Verde. Another memory of Falmouth.
And just before they left, Representative Vera welcomed them into the chambers, the House of Representatives. And you can see, we happened to have the occasion to be there at the same time as Sheriff Buckley, who was in a maroon suit coat. And so they all jumped together and had an opportunity. And then before they left... And then before they left, they, because Zita's last name is Vera, she took her picture in front of David's name on the board. And she very happily drives around Cabo Verde with a vote for Rep. Vera. This was just a concluding moment made possible by Rep. Vera as we were headed in to the airport.
And they took copious notes. I watched everything that they did. First of all, you'd love this, that when the kids got on the floor, on the rugs, they got right down on the rugs with them. The kids weren't intimidated, they, you know, they asked all kinds of really interesting questions. But those 24 and 26-year-olds loved the things that you had on your walls, the ideas, the suggestions. They couldn't wait to get back to Cabo Verde and share some of that. And they share as much as they can with us.
Thank you so much, Barbara. Thank you for the partnership and for helping us grow our world and the schools. And, and thank you for welcoming us into the, to the museum, because it is really fabulous.
You're fabulous, you're fabulous, you're fabulous. Thank you very much. Muito obrigada.
Yes. Margaret and I were two of the lucky staff that got to travel after. It's almost an anniversary, Barbara.
Oh, no.
I also wanted to say something. You know, one of the most, the meeting the students there was just incredibly wonderful. But I think one of the things that I learned about the school there and the connection with us is there was, we asked the students what they wanted to do. And this one student said, she wanted to come to the United States to learn, but then she wanted to take what she learned here to help in her country. And I think that really speaks about the connection that's being made for us and for them.
And you don't know how important that is. The first time I went to Cabo Verde, I was crying in 97, because they didn't have enough staff to staff the senior year in college. There was no graduating from college there at the time. And I could not believe it, because people outmigrated, because it was so poor. It was a third world country. 80% of their food products has to be imported. And I sobbed, this is awful, how can the country grow? And this year, because of some of this program and what I'm learning, and all the things this diaspora has done for them, mostly Americans have helped Cabo Verde grow, and they know it, they wouldn't be where they are without the U.S. infusion. And what the Minister of Culture said was, oh, you can't have just a museum in this program in Praia, because we now have three universities. So they are now going back and helping build. You're saving lives, you're building humanity throughout the world from this one program. They are the, we are the largest population here of immigrants in, in Massachusetts is from Cabo Verde right now. Thank you.
Obrigada.
Nada.
Okay. Next, we will have an update from the superintendent.
All right, thank you. I'll start out with the update on, excuse me, safety. We're continuing to conduct our fall Alice drills. A parent had asked me, and I realize when we talk about drills, probably most people think that it's just from the classroom. And so, and, and that's true, probably for the large part, but a parent asked me if, if I would speak to and let parents know that also there are times where staff members could be out on the playground, they could be in the lunchroom, they could be at different parts. And so, yes, we do practice from different locations throughout the, the building. So the fall drill was announced. We have not decided, that's a collaboration with the Falmouth Police Department, we have not decided on the spring drill. When they are not announced, that's usually when they may be in different locations, mostly. So just wanted to let everyone know, and I appreciate when a parent asks a really good question. It gives me an opportunity to, to share that. So thank you to that parent. We are assessing our school grounds for vulnerable areas around the schools for potential limit, to, to add limited fencing. Again, thank you to the parent that made a suggestion for a couple areas that needed suggestions. And we jumped right on that in DPW. Many thanks to them always, they're such a great partner, but was able to put some fencing in a vulnerable area that a parent had shared. And it's a different perspective, and that's, that's part of that partnership. So thank you to that parent. We're continuing to build our cameras and looking at that. We're also considering upgrading our camera system to a cloud base and bringing on two safety monitors to monitor these, this upgraded, more sophisticated camera units from a central location. The, the capabilities of it are incredible. We will not speak to all the details about that, because that's part of the safety plan. And just so you know, things that we do or don't share around safety is always discussed with the Falmouth Police Department about what portions of our safety plan we can talk about, and which we really should not be discussing in public. So, but, but now we are on that, and we are upgrading. We're also, we upgraded the radios at Falmouth High School for better communication on long range. So that just happened, and we are assessing all buildings to make sure that we have the, the right number of radios that we need in, in all of our, in our schools. So that's a little bit on the safety. I just wanted to share, the U.S. News and World Report announced the best middle schools. So that just came out, the best middle schools in the country. I'm pleased to announce that Lawrence School ranked 164 in Massachusetts out of more than 359. So U.S. News and World Report stops counting and ranking after 359. There's a lot more middle schools, but they stop at that point. So we are 164 in Massachusetts on the Cape and Islands. Lawrence is ranked second only to Montemoy. So that's a great honor. I will say that within that, the rankings Mashpee and Sandwich are not considered middle schools. They are considered high schools, because they have grade seven to 12. But just as a reminder, when the U.S. News and World Report came out with the high schools, I think it was a month ago, I think, when, that I announced that, that Falmouth High School ranked 76 in the best high schools on the Cape. And that was only for Cape, I'm sorry, 76 in Massachusetts, and only second to Nauset on the Cape for that. So congratulations to, to both our Lawrence and High School. It's really great, great honor, I so appreciate that. Something new that Dusty has decided they're, they're doing is staff attendance data now. They're going to be reporting it publicly. They're, so that will start this year, and it will start with last year's data. It will report all staff, administrators, and teachers separately, and then at the school level and at the district level. So it should be released soon. I just wanted to let you know, I've already let the, our staff know a couple weeks ago that this is, this will be now a new profile on the Dusty website. And although I am not responding to one of the community members that just spoke at a public comment, I already had it in here, but here it is, talking a little bit about school choice. And I want to start with, I know that during the enrollment, we said we had 175 students this year, which mirrored last year at 175 students. Something that we're actually seeing now is that current Falmouth students are needing to move out. They're losing the housing, they can't stay where they are, they're moving out, but they are filling out the school choice applications and they're staying. They do not want to leave Falmouth. So our numbers are very quickly, this has not happened like this right after school starts. Sometimes it happens throughout the year, something happens, but we've had a number after. So we are now over the, the 175 that we, we talked about. And I, I'm going to give periodic, maybe an update on the school choice numbers. I do not like to identify the, the school choice students by grade. They're usually very, very small numbers. And, you know, we, we really do, once they are in our schools, we don't consider them separate, we don't consider them from somewhere else. They are a Clipper through and through. And so to us, it, it, it doesn't matter whether you're school choice, you're here from somewhere else, or you are, you know, have a resident of Falmouth Public Schools. I want to make that very clear, but I know that the, the school committee member has also echoed that they'd like to know the numbers. So this year, we have a smaller amount in kindergarten. We actually had more students come with the upper grades, but in kindergarten, we had eight new kindergarten students. And they are represented, represented across Mullin Hall. We have five at North Falmouth, we have two, and T-Ticket has one. Last year was a little bit higher of kindergarten numbers. We had 16 kindergarten numbers, represented across all four elementary schools, one at East, three at Mullin, 11 at North, and one at T-Ticket. When you get applications, they do, they do request where, where they want, want to be at the elementary levels. And if we can accommodate that, we do. A lot of it is, it's either proximity to their home in a different district, you know, that's usually the, the reason why they're, or sometimes it's to their work, because they, they come to Falmouth to work. And so sometimes it's in location, the proximity to the work. And so when we can accommodate, we can, we do that. I was also asked by school committee member if I would talk about the changes and potential changes at the federal level. I am going to give a little bit of a report here, and I'm going to be mostly focused on the special education tonight. The federal government is reducing the number of staff at the U.S. Department of Education. They're at about half at what they were at the beginning of the year. So they were at 4133 in January, 2183 in March, and 2000 in October. They appear to be committed to continuing to support special education programming, but they are talking about partnering with another federal agency. One such department they're talking about is the Department of Health and Human Services. However, in the Health and Human Services Department, they have eliminated approximately 500 staff, specifically in the administration of children and families. And there are plans to reduce additional positions in the HHS. So the federal special education funding is about approximately 15 million with 7 million students, 15 billion, sorry, with 7 million students provided with special education services nationwide. Concerns are surfacing regarding having enough staff for the oversight, monitoring, technical assistance. While states and districts will still be held to IDEA and the 504 rules and regulations, states may have the obligation to ensure that the laws are being followed. So this may fall more, more on the states to, to do that monitoring and technical assistance. Approximately 70% of the complaints in the Office of Civil Rights are related to disabilities. They are also seeing employee cuts. It has been seen for years that they are understaffed with many open cases and often long waits to address the complaints that they do have. So there is concern, there's 605 employees in seven regional offices in January. One half of the employees were let go and seven offices were closed. So we believe that the OCR is down to 120 people this time. So that's a concern for, you know, our, our families. Again, a lot of families, but 70% of the complaints in the OCR are related to disabilities. It's important to reiterate, we will ensure the programming determined for each individual student in Falmouth Public Schools will receive the services that, that they so deserve. Our teachers are skilled at working with our students, with IEPs, within general education classes, as well as offering robust, separate programs in, in the district. We'll have an update at the next meeting from Sandy, Captain Vellus, in November, for more on our, our programming here in, in the schools. A little bit about the Falmouth Service Center right now. Normally this time of year, the Falmouth Service Center sees a large increase in the number of households needing assistance. According to the Service Center, this year it's more challenging with the federal shutdown and the expected loss of SNAP funds starting next week. So we did send out something to all families that just shared, you know, to please access, fill out paperwork, become clients at Falmouth Service Center, they are there to help you. Last week was the busiest week they had since February of 2025. They assisted 603 households from across the Cape and distributed 17,000 pounds of food. Approximately 70% of the households came from Falmouth. For Falmouth families, the following is available. Families, families can pick up food weekly. The family, Falmouth residents can apply for financial help every 18 months. Service Center can help with rent and mortgage, utilities, car insurance, insurance and car payments. The new Service Center Community Closet is open to our food pantry clients and has clothing for the family, household items, shoes, bedding, et cetera, all at no cost. They are currently signing up families for the Turkey Basket Program. They've already enrolled 538 Barnstable County households and have room for about 70 more in the program. They're providing also 320 baskets for military families. And the Falmouth client, families can enroll in our, in their children's holiday program, which provides a brand new coat, hat, and mittens for the children aged zero to 10, plus a gift card for their parents to shop for, for their children for Christmas, for the holidays. And then also, they can pick up a gift card for, to, to purchase items for their children age 11 to 17. And enrollment ends in mid-November, so I encourage people to take advantage of this for the community. I'd like to talk a little bit about SNAP. Approximately 42 million people across the U.S. could face disruptions to the food stamp benefits in November. The Agriculture Department warned state agencies of potential insufficient funds. They are looking at other funding sources, but will likely fall short of approximately eight, of the eight billion needed. I do not know what this means for Massachusetts, could not find that information at this point. But SNAP is outside the purview of the schools. Our free breakfast and lunch program will not be interrupted. So that, I just, you know, people are asking a lot of questions, whether one has to do with the other, but the, the, our free meals will, will continue. A part of our, as part of our partnership with the Cape Kid Meals, we continue to assess weekly who needs food outside of the school day. So that is our Weekend Backpack Program. Our numbers are holding steady between 70 and 80, and pretty much match the same number that we had last year. But of course, that could change, especially as we move into November and any of the SNAP, you know, benefits may be suspended. As you heard from Bella, there is a new food pantry at Falmouth High School, it's very exciting. I am passing around this flyer for you. Go this way, so you're going to see a little bit more of it. I appreciate that she had said that Cape Kid Meals, they're providing canned and other food, as well as snacks, to our high school students. This is not usual for Cape Kid Meals to be in, in the high school. So, so that's, that's wonderful, and thank you to Gips for volunteering to help run, run it. I'd also like to thank the Wacoit Church and the members of their congregation. They are making a large donation for the purpose of expanding the food pantry. We have a meeting starting on Monday that we're going to be talking about what that might look like. So I appreciate Wacoit Church and Knell Fields specifically. Immigration enforcement near schools. Senator Markey signed on to a letter with other senators calling for the U.S. Department of Education to pressure immigration authorities to refrain from carrying out immigration enforcement within 1,000 feet of any school property, citing the classroom disruptions that were in the Chicago area. I want to assure you and the community that there has been no incident that has occurred near one of our schools. However, I am very happy that there- Um, however, I am very happy that there is action being taken, uh, to ensure that this will not happen. So thank you to Senator Marketing, Markey, signing on, uh, representing Massachusetts. Um, just, I also want to remind you that we set protocols in place should an ICE agent show up at one of our schools. Those are still in place. We have not had to, uh, engage in those protocols, thank goodness, but, um, everyone is full aware of what the protocols are. Um, there is a special, um, event, um, that's coming up that started, um, uh, with a partnership, um, with, um, uh, MBL and Martha's Vineyard African American Heritage Trail, um, and involved our Lawrence students, which was pretty exciting, um, to be involved. I, I, I literally want, uh, to turn this over to, um, Henry right now so you can share some exciting news. He's done a lot of work, um, on this project.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I wish, uh, Carmella was here because she's amazing as well. So, um, uh, if you ever gone to Martha's Vineyard, you have to go to the African American Heritage Trail. It's amazing. Our kids go there, uh, each year at, at the Lawrence Age, and, uh, with, um, suggestion with, um, Sarah, uh, Gundulis at MBL, she said, "It would be great if we can extend it into Falmouth." And what her, uh, what the vision started to develop is like, "Let's take one, uh, scientific institution and put a plaque there." So there's forty plaques in Martha's Vineyard. You can go around and go check it out, and the kids have all done it. And so now what we did is, we had, uh, MBL give us a list of names and some research information, and they actually determined who should represent the first, um, the first, uh, what are we gonna say? The, the first spot from the, uh, that's gonna be at, uh, Woods Hole, and it's, it's gonna be MBL, and there, they had a, they, all the kids can, um, had their people who they wanted to, uh, represent, and they had a nice little project, and then they presented in front of the, uh, Martha's Vineyard, um, directors, uh, board of directors, and they chose from the kids' presentation, and it was competitive. It was like, really, they put themselves in the position, and it was really, uh, fantastic presentation. And then from that decision, they chose who's the next one. So the very first Woods Hole, uh, person will be Dr. Townsend, um, from the MBL, and he is amazing. Um, he worked for fifty years. Uh, he was, uh, the summer program for neuroscience excellence and, and success, advanced research training course. He's done so much in, uh, that area, and so we're very proud to have, uh, him to represent the first one, and we hope to continue to each scientific community. So we're hoping for a new one for next year, but right now, if you can, on Oc-, on Tuesday, and then we can send this, we can send an email.
Yeah, I'm gonna send it out to the.
On Tuesday, November eighteenth, um, from twelve to one, at the Row, uh, Lab- Laboratory, uh, in Woods Hole, will, will be the unveiling. They already have the plaque, uh, very much unveiling, and we're gonna bring Martha's, um, the board, um, from the African American, uh, Heritage Trail, they're gonna come down. We're gonna have officials from both sides of the island and over here, and, uh, it'll be really nice to have, uh, the school committee representing that this is the kids that chose it, and, um, they, they put their, for, for the print. So now they can go Martha's Vineyard and then come to cross the, uh, you know, come over, come over and say, "This is ours as well." So that's, it's been very, uh, exciting, and I just like that we are a beloved community base founded on a diverse population. It's all, you know, Barbara comes here and talks about this, and it is so true in Martha's Vineyard as well as in Falmouth. So, uh, to teach our kids that, uh, that, that's important. I, I love it, so, thank you. So we'll, we'll send something out to you, everyone.
Thank you, Henry, and, and that concludes my update. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Henry.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Um, how can we help with the pantry? How can the average?
I'm sorry, Melissa.
How can, how can we help with the pantry?
Thank you very much for the question, and since we're, um, meeting on Monday and we're looking about how we're gonna expand it, um, I will ask that, the question so that we can talk through this, but thank you, thank you for asking.
Sure.
Are we taking questions or not?
Yeah. Does anybody else have a, we'll start. Kelly, you have a question?
I think I'm good.
Katrina?
No.
Sue?
I'll sit.
Um, Dr. Dora, you had mentioned that fencing, getting back to your safety, um, update, fencing has been placed in a vulnerable area. Can you, are you comfortable being more specific, or do you not want to?
Yeah, no, I, I can. So when I say vulnerable areas, um, there are, um, at, at all schools, um, there are paths off the schools that, um, you know, that people traverse, um, and, and when I say, um, we're, we're looking at if there were ever a potential person that, that could come onto the ground, but we, on a regular basis, have our community members that cross through our, um, properties to get from one location to another. There might be a path, and then you go through, you might be able to, you know, get to, um, you know, McDonald's or, or Dunkin' Donuts, or, you know, different locations. Um, the playground, um, on, uh, Morse Pond, uh, has, uh, sorry, uh, Mullen Hall needs to be watched because parents, uh, families do not know that from seven to, um, five-thirty, that the community should not be on our grounds. They do come on, and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's innocent, and that's, but we're always watching for that and asking, but there are some certain areas that we could block off so that that doesn't happen. Um, and so, um, that, the, we're just looking for some of those, those areas, um, around the schools. So, yes, for safety reasons, we are, um, looking for certain areas, but it also can be a deterrent just for our, our wonderful community members that just love to be on the school grounds, and we are a part of our community. Um, and it's not that we don't want them to use our grounds, it's just that between, um, seven and five-thirty, um, we ask that, that no one comes on the grounds. Now, we, we have made signs that says that, um, and they are now, they're consistent. We've done this over the last couple of years. We've added signs consistent across the, the schools, but, um, we've also, I could have added that to the, um, we've, um, we're continuing to identify more and more spaces where we could just keep putting up the signs that says, "Not between seven and five-thirty." And, uh, so we're doing that as well.
Okay, uh, thank you, and just to follow up, um, I know that we had, um, uh, passed along, uh, a request that T-Ticket, just because of its location near McDonald's, um, just have a, a, a special look in terms of that kind of, uh, visual, um, fencing? So, thank you.
The fence that went up was the T-Ticket.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Liz?
No.
Margaret?
Thank you.
Chris?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Learned a lot from that tonight. Yeah, it's good that we're buffering those things coming from the politics and federal stuff. Okay, great. Okay, um, next we'll hear from, an update from Finance and Operations. That would be Mr. Dart.
Right, uh, we're just gonna be passing you the, uh...
Excuse me?
The budget sheet.
Oh, okay. Oh, we get our colors.
Yeah.
We love our colors. Yeah.
Thanks. So this will be a relatively, uh, quick update.
Is that possible from you, Paul?
Yeah.
Sorry, Paul.
That's the question today.
So if you, if you look on the far left-hand side, you'll see that the, uh, just to remind everybody, the budget numbers, uh, for total salaries there at the bottom is fifty-one million, six oh one, um, and, uh, non-salaries are nine million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. For the total budget is sixty-one million, four hundred and twenty-four thousand. So, um, we're, we're talking about results here through the end of September. Uh, so if you look to the far right, um, you'll see on the, in the column, second from the right there, totally encumbered in expense, you see five million, two ninety-nine in salaries, expense so far. Uh, in non-salary expenses, you have a total of six million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, and, and non-salary expense, uh, for a total of twelve million, tw- uh, two twenty-one. I don't mean to be sounding like I'm just reading your numbers. My, my point here is if you move one point, one column further to the left, you'll see the encumbrances, and it, we're told we've encumbered funds for the year for things such as, uh, our bus contract. We, we've encumbered, uh, encumbered two-point-three million dollars for our bus contract with the Lucini, uh, to provide, uh, regular, uh, transportation. Um, we've also encumbered one-point-five million dollars for all of the utilities for this year, so that money is that, when I say encumbered, essentially, we take what we expect to spend for the entire year and set it aside and pull it out of the pool. There's also encumbrances, uh, for things like technology, or, uh, contracted services for maintenance, uh, for special education and so on. So that adds up to your five-point-three, uh, three million in non-salary, uh, encumbrances. So that's the biggest impact, is, is really, you know, setting these funds aside in the, in the first month of the year, um, and making sure we have sufficient funds to, uh, pay those bills, uh, throughout the year. So with that, uh, we're in, uh, good shape. Um, I did, uh, do our early estimates for out-of-district tuition and some of the out-of-district transportation and, uh, especially contracted services, and we look to, uh, at this point, uh, be good, in good shape with what we have, uh, for funding, um, through the rest of the year. However, I just caution people that, uh, the big period for changes is out-of-district tuitions can often be in the spring, or, you know, or, uh, the late January, February period. So, uh, we're in good shape today, um, uh, but, uh, you know, things may change down the road. So, uh, any, any questions on that?
Okay, so we would start with Chris this time, right? Didn't we start over here last time? Okay, Chris?
No.
Margaret? Melissa?
No, thanks.
Glenda?
No.
Sue?
Um, it was mentioned, um, at our, I think our last meeting, I can't remember the date, but, um, the admin building utilities, um, to maintain the admin building is fifty thousand dollars a year, just to maintain it.
Yep.
Um, that was in relation to how much it costs to maintain worse, and, um, my, my question, I guess, is, uh, and I will, at the end of the meeting, ask for a future agenda item to put on the agenda. Um, if we can recoup fifty thousand dollars into our budget just by, um, forsaking the administration building, that would be a benefit, um, and I would like to have a serious conversation about that, so I just wanted to bring that up since the administration building, salaries, non-salaries, was in this budget. Um, and we're talking about encumbered money, we can free up some of it immediately, or as close as.
Good.
Okay. Kel?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
I make fun of you, but we do appreciate your patience in answering our questions and color coding, you know?
Oh, Mike's got a question.
Oh, Mike's got a question.
Oh, okay, here's Mike. Uh, things will get lively now.
Yeah, they will, and Carrie, I've been here the whole time. I watched everything. I was very impressed with both the students in both grades, but, um, I had a question, I don't know if it's for Dr. Dora or Paul, but the last meeting, I gotta read a quote, uh, talking about the Lawrence School front door, it said the front entrance was inadequate for security, and this goes into safety. I've been doing a lot of research on the Mass Chief site in Pass, uh, about entryways to schools. So I guess my question is, are any of our schools' entryways adequate for security? And if not, what are we doing to address that?
What does that have to do with our update?
Right, I, I think...
It's operations and finance.
It depend, uh, so what I view as adequate security, Mike, for, uh, for entrance ways, where the front office or in staff in particular have direct view of incoming people coming through the vespea. Um, and so with buildings that were built in the seventies or sixties, or in the Lawrence case, in the fifties, that's not current design. So what happens is we put a safety monitor right outside of the doorways, or right inside of the doorways, I should say, to monitor the traffic coming in and about, and then once they're into the building through the doorway, they then check in with the front office. All right, so if you think about T-Ticket, you come in through the entrance, but the front office is off to your right. Lawrence, the same situation, you come into the main entrance, there's a safety monitor up in the, uh, right at the top of the steps, and then the office is off to the right. The high school, you come right in, the office, the high school's a good example of design where you come in through the front door and you'll have the, the front office right there, uh, with the direct visibility of those students. So that is, that's what I was referring to of, of not, if you don't have that direct sight from the main office, uh, to the front entrance. That is...
All right, I don't wanna, I don't wanna tie this up, it was about the safety update, but, um, I would like, in the last end of the meeting, for a special meeting on safety, because if a monitor the front door, they're not walking around the building, and there are some, some holes in our, in our safety protocols and how we're doing it, but I will, again, request for a special safety meeting about that, 'cause I think it's very important, but thank you for that answer.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the update on operations and finance. Um, next we will be acting on a memorandum of agreement. Lori?
Uh, yes, so, um, I believe, um, I mean, I, I know I mentioned it, and I believe when, um, our athletic director, uh, Todd Olivera was here, he was speaking about, um, a potential new sport, um, and that's wrestling, and we started last year, um, with a club, and we had, uh, just to see how many students, um, would come out, um, and, you know, was interested. And so we had, I believe, seventeen, um, at one time during the club, might have held steady at the time we talked about it, that's how many, uh, came out. And so, uh, we started seriously looking at, um, a competitive sport at our high school, um, for wrestling. Um, so, uh, we also, Mashpee numbers, um, were at a point, and we weren't sure how many we get, we, and this is not unusual to, um, combine districts, uh, with a sport. So we, um, were going together, uh, with Mashpee to offer the sport, um, this year. Um, so in this process, of course, you know, we don't have wrestling in our, um, collective bargaining agreements, so, um, we, uh, Todd being, you know, like where he believes the wrestling coach would match up to other coaching positions, um, and, um, the union, and we all, you know, worked back and forth, and we came up with, and in agreement, and this, this is gonna take a little bit of time, it's a brand-new, um, coach, um, position, so we came up with that it would fall in category E, and we felt that, that that was best aligned. Um, so, uh, we, um, I'm bringing this to you because it is a new wrestling, this means a, a new coach, head coach position. Um, and so, um, the union, uh, is satisfied with this, and I'm asking the school committee, um, to act. We are, uh, I was hoping to have this to you, um, last meeting, um, but we were still in negotiations, and so, um, I'm asking you tonight if you would go ahead and approve it, even though this is the first time you're seeing the MOA, and that's because it's a winter sport, it starts right after, um, Thanksgiving, uh, and we need to, um, get the coach, and we have to purchase equipment, um, for the, uh, the sport, and so we need a little bit of time to make that happen. So, uh, I'm asking if you would vote in the positive. Uh, I've had experiences with wrestling, uh, in the, the past, the Cape, other Cape schools have wrestling, uh, teams. Uh, there are students that, you know, absolutely love wrestling, and, uh, it's just another way of connecting students to our schools. Yes. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't say the yes.
Would you like a motion now? Yes. I, I move to accept the memorandum of agreement between the Falmouth School Committee and the Falmouth Education Educators Association regarding the wrestling head coach. Okay, is there a second? If I could speak to that? Okay, could I just, um, Sharon, so, um, Sue made the motion, and you got it? Okay. Sometimes when there's bad acoustics, it's hard for our recorded, our, um, record keeper to hear. I'm sorry, go ahead, Sue. I want to thank everyone involved, probably for the past twenty years. I've been looking forward to this. Um, it will enable a group of kids to...
It will enable a group of kids to have another activity that they haven't had before. And in comparison to the other schools around the Cape, we have been lacking in this. For that, this type of kid, it will be very helpful, and in a lot of ways, one more connection for them to stay in school.
Okay. Are there any other comments or things? Okay, so--
Okay, Mike just went up. Maybe he was just getting ready to vote.
Okay, so we'll take a vote then. Has to be roll call since Mike has been in. So Mike, how do you vote?
Dylan, yes.
Okay. Cal?
Well, yes.
Evan, yes.
The ghosty, yes.
Owen, yes.
Muskeke, yes.
Melvin, yes.
And Maderish, yes. So it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we will hear a review on the navigating the future proposals.
So I wanted to, when we gave the presentation at the special meeting on the Lawrence grade configuration, we had a lot of staff members talking. It was, and it was very in-depth. So I want to just give a, you know, first start with a why, and then just give kind of a high-level overview before you start your discussion. So the why, why are we discussing the grade configuration at Lawrence School? I mean, our overarching goal is to reduce our schools by one due to the declining enrollment. By reducing our schools by one, we are being fiscally responsible, meaning if we continue to keep seven buildings open, we are continuing to spend dollars to maintain schools with reduced enrollment. We can reduce two middle schools into one by configuring Lawrence School with three grades. This is financially sound decision. I want to recap the highlights of the presentation. First, I'd like to thank, the entire school committee was at that special meeting, and I really appreciate being there and listening to the admin team present and to hear our recommendation. I'd like to acknowledge that there were eight highly educated, highly knowledgeable, and highly experienced administrators presenting the research, the data, and the recommendation. In addition, we shared invaluable insight from our faculty and staff through survey results and specific focus groups with fifth and eighth-grade teachers. Everything we presented supported the recommendation of the highly regarded individuals on the Building Needs Task Force. The process set last fall was for the Building Needs Task Force to review the research, review the data, and the community input. This process included rigorous discussions and concluded with a recommendation to the school committee. As admin at the special meeting, we presented both sides of the research, with supports fifth grade in the elementary school and supports fifth grade in the middle school. The achievement data showed there are high-performing districts with fifth grade in the elementary and high-performing districts with fifth grade in the middle schools, and low-performing districts in both elementary and the middle schools. The same was true with the eighth-grade achievement data. The research states that what makes the difference is not where students are located. The difference is the pedagogy, which is how we teach, supports for students in the areas of academics, social-emotional, and behavioral, and the relationships adults nurture with students. These three critical components are highly valued in the Clipper experience and the approach to educating every child in Falmouth Public Schools. Furthermore, Falmouth outperformed the average of the district's achievement who had fifth grade in the elementary and who had fifth grade in the middle schools. The same was true with the eighth grade. Our educators teaching fifth and eighth-grade students presented advantages and considerations, but no concerns with fifth grade in the middle school and eighth grade in the high school. Therefore, if the, if location of where we have fifth grade and where we have eighth grade is not a factor, it's because it's how we teach and how we support kids and the relationships we build, then it comes down to, then, what is, what is the local context, the local factors that entered into our recommendations? Declining enrollment indicates that just a few years, we will have a high school enrollment that's half the capacity of what the enrollment was after the renovation. One of your colleagues described expertly what an under-enrolled school looks like and feels like. Furthermore, all Cape high schools have eighth or seventh and eighth in the high school, except for one. There are also examples of districts off-Cape that have eighth in the high school. We also offered a host of opportunities for eighth-grade students if they were located in the high school. As it was noted during the meeting by another one of your colleagues, the fifth grade is currently and historically has already been out of the elementary schools. We are simply adding seventh grade to the already combination of grades five and six. Staff has supported the transition from elementary school to fifth grade for years. They expertly know what to do. Another one of your colleagues took the time to conduct their own research. As they reported, this research does not define one right answer. The factors that make the difference for a child, regardless of location, is pedagogy, support, and relationships. Each of you have your views, which are reflected in our community by numerous communications. There are two views, both are worthy. Whichever you decide, I have full confidence that we, as administrators and staff of Falmouth Public Schools, will make it a success for our students. Reiterate where I began, we have an obligation to make fiscally responsible decisions while providing the best education in a safe and educationally appropriate school building. The Building Needs Task Force and the administration supports eighth grade into the high school and grades five, six, seven in the Lawrence School. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So this is a discussion time. I suppose we'll just go around the room and hear discuss. So I believe we start in the middle, which, Melissa, is that okay if you're--
No.
No, I know, I know. Okay. We'll make, how about Glenda? You'd be the middle and, is that all right?
Sure. Terry, before we could begin, can I just ask a clarifying question? Because there's two agenda items, one after the other, and the superintendent's statement just then had more to do with grade configuration, and so I'm wondering which one we are discussing right now.
Well, she mentioned, she mentioned all the grades, so I guess we're discussing all the grades.
No, are we review on navigating future together? Was that what just happened?
Yes.
And now it's discussion of grade configuration?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you for that. So now we're at discussion of Lawrence School grade configuration?
Correct.
Yeah, I will say, I'm gonna, because of the way it was set up, I was going to talk about the Morse, I'm dividing that, I'm talking about the Morse Pond before the Morse Pond item on the list, opposed to trying to do both before your discussion. The way that the agenda was, was set, I, I should have added that at the end, that I have more to come on my, my review, but I, because the discussion, the next item is about the grade configuration, I stopped. So I should have added that.
I'm just a little confused. Why, why, why are we discussing this? Is this in preparation for, just to get our questions answered in preparation for what? Like, we're not taking a vote, so what, why are we, why are we discussing, I guess, is my question?
I guess it seemed from the last meeting that more discussion would, was wanted.
Okay, okay. Just, that was my comment.
Could, I don't usually start things, but could I start this discussion? Because I, I want to send people in a whole different direction. So I hope you'll listen out. I wrote up some stuff about the Lawrence School configuration. Okay? All right. During our conversations about grade reconfigurations at Lawrence and Falmouth High School, we have been more or less trying to make square pegs fit into round holes. Fifth grade is widely regarded as elementary, and eighth is not really high school. We have great teachers who could make things work, we know that. However, why are we not considering grade configurations that represent the widely-accepted definition of a middle school, which is six through eight? We received a letter from a constituent who suggested considering Falmouth School's choice numbers as a new perspective, a new perspective for looking at things. If we are accepted into MSBA, we have an opportunity to build a state-of-the-art middle school. So why don't we build it with a configuration as a true middle school with great academic opportunities and athletics? Maybe students from other districts would school choice it, because we would be standing out it. For example, if we want to make academic, more possibilities for them, I researched, and there are 12 pre-AP courses. So they are designed for kids who will eventually take high school courses. So at our really great, state-of-the-art middle school, we could offer something such as that, pre-AP courses. At Lawrence, they recently added a football program that, it's so successful, and those kids play other schools. It's not intramural, it's interscholastic, I guess. So those are just a couple of things that I was thinking about. I think if we put aside our program, our discussion so far about Lawrence School, and let's brainstorm opportunities for our state-of-the-art middle school. Other districts on the Cape have eighth graders in the high schools, but that doesn't mean that Falmouth has to. NOSSET is a nine-through-12 school, and they are ranked, I believe, wicked high in the state, not wicked high, high in the state, okay? Maybe I'm exaggerating because I'm excited about my proposition, I'm sorry. So, you know, we, I taught at Lawrence School for a while. This is a special grade level. Kids are becoming young adults, and they're different at home than they are in school. There's all kinds of, peer pressure is so strong, it's a very, very particular age group. And if we give them a great experience at Lawrence, I think, why would they ever want to leave Falmouth then? If we, I think if we catch them in the middle, okay, it would make, it would help our, you know, people transferring out. I also don't think if kids want to go to the Volk, that they should be, you know, any consideration of this, because that's a special type of studies that a kid wants to have. Okay, we've done not a large number of surveys on grade configuration at Lawrence. I'm not sure we targeted the most important group of parents. That would be kindergarten through grade, grade-three parents. Surveys before were hypothetical. If we build this, what would you like to see happen, blah, blah, blah? Now we have, well, if we have the money, we can say, okay, we have this money from MSBA, we're going to build a new middle school. Where would you like your potential, your going-down-the-road-grade-five students to go? I mean, and I think parents would take it, not more seriously, but with more meaning if they knew, okay, you really, there really is a choice here, we really have this money, we're really going to build a new school. You know, maybe we'd get more surveys. We sometimes say, we send them out, we don't get enough surveys. I think if those younger, those parents of younger kids knew they really, their kids were going to be going there, they would, you know, be more apt to, more people would probably send in surveys. That's what I guess I'm going to say. Okay, so we are going to spend millions and millions and millions of dollars, the most Falmouth has ever spent on any school building, renovating it, and our future generations of kids will be impacted. We genuinely need more parents and taxpayers' input before we make such a monumental decision. I spoke with a rep from MSBA, and they say that we have to decide on the configuration. That's a local decision. But the feasibility phase takes quite a while, and in the first part of the feasibility phase, they won't make the decision, but they will guide you through the steps to make a configuration decision. And we need to get that ready before next April town meeting, because we need to go to them and say, okay, here's what we want to do with our school. We need $2 million from the town to start this feasibility phase. And the people at MSBA said, by then, you gotta have, pretty sure that the taxpayers are going to buy into this, because it's a lot of money. So anyway, in the meantime, before we make any decisions, I think we need to have workshops, we need to have more surveys, and we need to have more forums with parents. And I was thinking, maybe the precinct leaders from the precincts in town might want to be invited in, because they're with the people, the actual town meeting members in each precinct, and they meet with them. So I think if we have conversations, it would be nice to invite them in. And I repeat again, more from the parents about these kids who are going to go down the road. So that's a whole different way of thinking about things. I hope you'll consider it. Thank you. Don't do that, I don't, don't do that. But thank you for considering. Okay. Anybody else want to make comments?
Which way are we going?
Oh.
Mike also has his hand up, too.
Oh, Mike wants to comment first? He's, he's an outlier, so we'll start there today, okay?
Yeah, and I only have one comment, and you kind of stole a lot of my thunder. But the last time we had this discussion, I know that, I think there was five or six of us who were asking for more surveys and more community input, like you had just said, Terry. Again, we don't need to have the number configuration by December, and we might not even get it in December, so there's no rush in this. I think that what Terry just said, work together, let's figure this out and spend a couple extra minutes looking at it. Again, when, whenever we have this vote for the grade configuration, I should, I think it should be later on, after we know if we get approved or not, and then give us some more time to do surveys and data collection. That's it, Terry, thank you.
Okay. So I guess we're still in the middle? Glenda, did you want to say anything now?
I know you've answered this a million times, Paul, but just kind of building off of Mike's. If, if we say that there are going to be three grade configurations, but not commit to what the grade configurations are, is that going to be acceptable to MSBA? Or do we have to commit to the specific grades, because that will give us the specific enrollment numbers?
Yeah, I mean, the important part is that we, we give credibility to the three-grade structure. We do not need a definitive decision on that, but the three-straight grade structure is important. So the MSBA will look next year to come up with the, if we're invited in in December, then next year, they have to start to apply a level of capital for this project. They have to set that aside under their own plan. And the level of capital that they apply to this project is based on the number of students. So if you have three grades and your projection is 607, that's more than where you are today at 444. And, and therefore, they're going to set aside a higher level of capital to help with the reimbursement. All right? They will work to decide the ultimate grade structure, you know, but the, the, really the commitment is you're going with three grades, and that, that has a big impact on them then versus saying, oh, we decided we want to keep two grades. That, that decision has to be made.
Thank you.
All right.
Melissa?
No.
Margaret?
I thought we were going around that way.
We're just starting in the middle.
Okay. One of the things that I've heard, and I thought that we were aware of this, is that whatever this transition is, that the more time we have to plan for would be in our best interest. And so I guess I'm a little concerned about the difficulty of thinking about this. Bourne, I believe, decided last week, last week or last month, that they were going to move their eighth grade to the high school. And-- And their school committee will be voting on it at the next meeting. They've had no community input, they've had no conversation with anybody in terms of the reporting I've read, that that's happened. So I was away last meeting, but I certainly read the newspaper account, thank you, and I listened to the meeting from last time you were here. And so I'm a little concerned about the delay in terms of making a decision. And I'm going to be quite upfront. I had many conversations with Dr. Dorn in the very beginning because I had some concerns about fifth grade being in middle school. And so I, we went at it. And that's what led me to really begin to do my research in terms of what is best. I have loads of family members who are teachers, I have loads of family members who are in elementary school. So I've talked to them, but I also did research with, you know, people from Ridgewater and from people I know who are in universities. And what I found out was that it really depends on good planning, good time, an opportunity to put in place what's appropriate. It doesn't matter if the fifth grade is in fourth grade with the elementary or the fifth grade is in middle school. What matters is the quality of education, how we approach it, and the planning we do is put in place so that we give the administration, the principals, the teachers, an opportunity to work this out. So it's a grave concern of mine. The other thing, by the way, was something one of the members said, is our fifth grade is already in middle school. So if we move them to fourth, back to elementary school, we're sort of demoting it. So what I'm saying is, I think it's really important that we think about this. It seems as if there is no correct answer. And so I think that we need to move forward to take a vote. And I think when I heard about a new school, are we talking about building a new building? Because, no, we're talking about renovating Lawrence, right?
Yes.
Okay. No, I wasn't clear for what you had said about a new school. So my position is that I think that we need to move forwards as a committee, make a decision, and that will help ensure that what happens to our students is in their best interest because we've given plenty of time for them to prepare to do what we decide they need to do.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Chris?
Yeah, I kind of, you know, second some of what Margaret's saying in terms of just time of the, time is of the essence. And so I'm curious, in terms of the feasibility study that will be required to do for Lawrence, what, what does that really entail in terms of kind of, it sounded like it would be a really detailed feasibility study. And I'm just kind of curious in terms of what that would kind of encompass.
Well, it's, it's kind of threefold. So one is the educational profile of the district and specifically in the schools. Another is on, and the enrollment for the district. They're going to have us make, redo our NESTech study, you know, they need their own data for that. The third is they will ask us to review their maintenance program and our capital program for the district. And then as well as the, you know, to study what the educational program is for the grade structure now that you're putting in. Finally, on this whole plan is build versus renovate. They will require us to study what it costs to build a new building and what you would get from that study versus what it would cost for us to renovate a building and what we would get through that renovation. And they want that study to do, to be done because they want the highest chance of success if they move forward with us that this whole program gets approved by the town. And, and that's a critical point. So I think that's sort of the highlight of this feasibility study. Now, just towards the end of that too, is the architects and engineers are hired, you start to study the design of the building, again, the renovation versus the, the build. But then you, you know, if you're deciding on the path for, say, a renovation, then you really start to take this educational plan and say, all right, what do I need for this building to become and fit three grades? If it's five, six, seven, it may look this way. If it's six, seven, eight, it's going to look differently, you're going to have different lab space and so on. So that's the, the decisions that we all make, you know, how it, how it affects the architectural drawings and so on, so.
So it sounds like it would be a pretty comprehensive study where it would almost look at our entire district from K through high school, potentially. So, so I feel like that study alone is, is what a lot of people are calling for and is something that would probably help us figure out what the grade configuration should be based on, you know, you know, I have a hard time kind of shaking what member Cohen had mentioned about a high school that is an 1,100, 1,200-capacity school but filled half-full. And I feel like that can't be good for the district as well. So I'm, I'm thinking that this feasibility study, when they look at that, they would want to see the overall health of the whole district. It is kind of my understanding of it. And so, you know, I, I feel like that, I feel like we're, we're leaning towards, you know, obviously three grades at Lawrence, you know, and in terms, and it seems like this feasibility study will help us to determine for our district, specific to our community, what's the best configuration based on what our high school looks like, what our elementary schools look like. So, you know, I, I'm in favor of moving forward with, with going with a three-grade structure at the Lawrence, but then seeing what this feasibility tells us in terms of how we move, in terms of the specifics moving forward. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking to jump ahead, but in terms of figuring out what we do with other schools as well. So that's kind of my initial, just initial pass. Thank you.
Okay. Cal?
I wasn't sure what you had. So I, I think a lot of, you know, I don't think I have a lot of new things to offer. I, I appreciate the idea of not delaying and giving plenty of time for, for planning. I also, Chris, that comment about the half-empty school kept replaying in my brain over the last week and, and I think it's a very important consideration. In general, I've heard far more comments from community members and, and parents about the benefits of moving eighth grade to the high school than not, which I think is an important consideration for me. And I've also heard, you know, we have heard from, from people that the process has moved too fast, but I have started hearing from a lot of people that they think it's moving too slow. And maybe it's partly what's going on in Bourne, but I think we have to recognize what uncertainty feels like for families that might be impacted. And it weighs on you, you know, it, we saw the weight that it had, that it, the, the toll that it took on our East Falmouth and T-Ticket communities last year when we were talking about potentially merging the two. And I don't want to discount what uncertainty does to people, not just our families, but our staff. You know, we need to respect the time that they're going to need to do this right, which I'm sure they will. But I'm to the point now that I feel the last whole year plus has given me plenty of time to research, plenty of time to consider recommendations, parent opinion, stakeholders, and I feel very confident in my ability to make a decision now. And I, I think that we should proceed with doing that. I'm not interested in putting families through more surveys and more forums and I think we've done our due diligence and now I just want us to, to make the difficult decision.
Katrina?
So immediately, I would just like to thank the breath of fresh air that came from our chair. That's the first time I have heard a genuinely new idea in this conversation. I recognize that perhaps I'm on the minority here, but to me, it feels like we've spent a year discussing and have come to the exact same conclusion that we started with a year ago. The, the weight of uncertainty is heavy, but the weight of feeling like we have done nothing and have not done as much as we should is heavier to me. And I, I don't know if the chair, before I carry on, I wonder for my own sense of sanity, is it possible for us to do just a raising of hands, who wants more surveys and input and forums on this topic? Because it's hard to get a sense and if not enough of us do, then there's really no purpose to continuing and I can leave my comments unsaid.
I don't know if that...
We did it in August, we did it in August at a meeting, we raised our hand to see if we wanted Lori to comment.
Okay, I don't care.
I think it's just a straw poll.
I don't care one way or the other.
It would help me to know because we have said in the past, there have been four to five members at various meetings who have asked for additional polls, asked for additional surveys, asked for more input, more forums, more feedback. And I'm hearing from some members tonight that that's not what's needed and I cannot tell if the majority of the committee would like that. And I've also heard the superintendent really clarified for me that she needs to know how many people want something in order for her to pursue that. So for her, the forums, the input, the surveys, that process for her is finished. She made that clear to me, that was last year. So for herself, the superintendent is not pursuing that and it would be up to us as a committee to ask clearly for that and she would need to know how many people. So I'm wondering if before I make any more comments, can we show up hands, who wants more feedback, input, family engagement?
Could you put the MSBA into that mix because now we've, we know that they can help us too?
Sure, but if we're voting for grade configuration and, and relinquishing Morse before we get to that stage, that's kind of...
Well, what, can you be more specific on what kind of input? Because you just mixed two things there. Grade configuration and Morse, so.
When we had our meeting on August 19th, our special meeting, there were a number of us and I could, Chris, I'm sorry, I'll do the last names, Lumping, Madeiros, myself, Margaret at a different meeting, and Haylen, had all asked specifically for staff surveys, family forums, more input from other staff in addition to the eighth grade and high school, family input, I'm just reading the things I had circled here, student-led forum, parent surveys. You tonight asked for parent surveys for the kindergarten and first grade parents currently. So we've had these requests and in regards, I guess I'll, I'll just make it in regards to grade configuration. Do we need those things before we can proceed to a vote? Because it's not clear to me right now and I don't want to keep articulating my feelings, which you've already heard, if we don't have a majority of people who want more information. Is that clear?
So how many people would like to have more information before they make a decision?
On grade configuration. But you're saying like surveys and forums, right? Specific to surveys. Well, there was a bunch of things mentioned, staff surveys, family surveys, student surveys, more input and engagement in the form of forums and listening sessions and workshopping. I've heard these terms, there's, these are all terms.
It just helps to know what you mean.
Right, it's a plethora of engagement and surveying, get more input, all of the above under that umbrella.
That's what I'm thinking, yep. Very.
Okay, so how many people?
Can I just ask a question?
Sure, sure.
A timeline? So if we do this, when, when are we voting for just to say three, three grades or, or two grades? When are we doing that?
It's already...
That's already done.
That's already done, okay. So it's just then, then when would we, given that input, when are we voting? Five, six, seven, or seven, you know?
I think it depends on the answer to the straw poll.
Okay, so we're not really under any kind of ti- time constraint to do that? We could, we could vote on that in January or February or, I'm just wondering what our timeline would be if we were to have these.
I'll just address that question.
Yes, thank you.
So, so let me just, no, just talk again about the Lawrence application. So I, I do want to emphasize sort of where we are. You know, our building is one of the oldest buildings. It's, it's, that means it moves high on the list. It gives us a better chance of success with the MSBA. The second is that Falmouth hasn't had a project for a build or renovate in front of the MSBA. It had a predecessor organization, but not the MSBA. So that too raises Falmouth's chances of success. Then the third component is that we are lucky to be in the application pool that we are in this year and that that application pool is relatively small. So our chances of success in getting a invitation is now higher because of what the factors that just, I'm not speaking for the MSBA, I'm just saying, these are the, the weight of how they make decisions. And, and so if that's the case, if we do get an invitation, then there's a sort of a sequence of decision-making that has to happen. And that now builds the case, not just with the MSBA, because now we're in the program, but it begins to build the case with the town and, and what the voters need to, to make, to make the economic decision that they're going to now be asked to make. So what's that first, following the Lawrence situat, what's the first decision point? And that this first decision point is a Moss Pond School and whether this building is returned to the town. Because now that decision influences the, the three-grade structure and they will need, for example, they will need to see a statement from us, an SOI for the Moss Pond School filed within the first quarter as a, you know, as part of this program. So they, that decision is relatively close here. It's, it's, we're on that timeframe. And the other part of that is what we're telling the voters, that we have this major project coming down the road and we're going to be making, if invited into this, again, I know a good likelihood, but if invited in, we're now going to be asking for $2 million. And so the voters are going to be thinking, okay, but enrollment is declining. So we, how is Falmouth Public Schools going to deal with this decline enrollment? And now what's the right campus structure? Because we can't continually to invest major dollars in all of these buildings while affording a major renovation or new build for the Lawrence School. I mean, it's just, it, the town has a big capital pile out there, not a pile, but a big level of capital commitments that they are making. We're not the only part of that, of that level, something like $800 million in capital projects. So we need to make that decision about more... So we need to make that decision about Morse Pond to build credibility with the voters. That first, if invited, our first effort will be go to the town in April for the first $2 million allocation. And then following that is the other decision. Now your decision on Morse Pond, now you integrate configuration, and then the final step in the elementary schools' decision. So that is the sort of the sequence, Lawrence, Morse Pond, grade configuration, and elementary schools.
So can I ask someone? When I spoke with a person from the MSBA, she said that as soon as you got in, you didn't have to have your grade configuration ready. You know, they don't expect you to have it ready because you've been analyzing it. And but one thing that you mentioned that she did say was, the MSBA really wants you to educate the voters and, not the voters, the taxpayers. I mean, they really need to know things along the way. Because if somewhere along the way, some confusion arises about some wing we're going to add to the school, or some science lab money, they just want them to be, they just want to know that they're really on board and everything with what's going on. So that's important, that the voters are with you. So and but the other thing I caught in speaking with her was that you have a few months, you have two or three months after you're accepted. And they will, like I said, they won't make the decision for you, but they can guide you. So why, if we're going to spend millions and millions, would we throw away any information we could get? I mean, why would you throw away any information that's free? I mean, well, it's part of their program. But so why not, you know, wait till we get in with them, have them say maybe do this or maybe do not? Again, they're not going to make the decision. But so, I don't know. That's the way I understood when I spoke with the representative. By the way, this representative was also knew how Falmouth Town Meeting worked and everything, because she was on the MSBA when the high school was done. So she knows our town and our community and our history on that. So I just wanted to throw that in. Did I misunderstand anything?
No. I think if you're talking about grade, I just want to differentiate grade configuration from the future of Morse Pond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're not the same.
Margaret? Okay, I'm sorry.
I have a question to respond to that. Is that okay?
Sure. I don't, you know, I lost track because I've been talking a lot in the middle of it, which I don't usually do. I'm sorry.
Well, and I did a weird thing where I put my comments on hold to ask for a straw poll, which we haven't had yet, so.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I heard something that actually the decision about Morse Pond needs to come before the grade configuration. Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah.
Okay. So the agenda should be a little bit different. Okay. That's my first question. My second question is, I had heard, and I thought I had heard, that our application for money would be strengthened if the school committee had made a decision about the grade configuration. That's what I had heard. That's what I had heard, and I am asking for a clarification.
Well, if there is, let me just say, I've consistently said, the strongest component of our application is the age of Lawrence School, the condition of Lawrence School, the where we are as the district in not having had a project before the MSBA. The high school was before the predecessor organization. And so we're not been in front of them for a major project. And then the applicant pool. But as we make decisions here, particularly, and in my view, the most important is the Morse Pond decision right now, that if you delay that decision, then it seems to me that you keep opening up whether you're two grades or three grades. And if you're not having to make a decision about Morse Pond, you still have this optionality. And I don't think that that helps. We need, you know, they're going to be determining this great, how much of the reimbursement we will need for this project. That is based on the number of students that will be in this building. But also, as you start this, as I've said, we need to develop an educational plan. That educational plan is dependent on the structure within, in the building. And then that's, you know, if, so you need to know what the grade structure is. You develop the educational plan. The educational plan then develops into the architectural plan. Because a lab space for an eighth grade is different for a lab space for a fifth grade. I mean, that's just, you may not even need it for a fifth grade. So you know, the point is, you don't have this indefinite period of time to figure out grade configuration. But you really do need to start to make decisions, one after, they are sequential decisions. The major decision to make upfront, and I think this goes for not just the MSBA, but for the voters, is the decision on Morse Pond.
Okay. I don't know where we are in this. Okay. Susan?
I don't, please hold on one second. I'm sorry. We never took a poll. We can come back to it.
But people are contributing to answering your poll, I think.
Sure. So I didn't finish my thoughts, and I can come back to my thoughts. So I will, we can carry on. I just wanted to bookmark that and make sure we're not forgetting it. Sorry, Susan. Carry on.
I couldn't agree more with Paul in regards to, we need to act on the Morse Pond. We need to show good faith and fiscal responsibility to the town. Since it's embedded in the application as three grades, all of this should fall into place. We've heard from Dr. Harris in regards to even the eighth grade to the high school. He's confident that a program, a school within a school could be developed. I too considered what you've had to say in regards to the small amount of students at the high school. And as the NESDAQ predicted, we're down in the 600 range. So by the time all of this is done, where are we going to be at? If we don't have a viable high school for our students in Falmouth, will we even have a high school? I don't know. But we have to correct that problem as we move along as well. We're all in agreement. And data shows we've got declining enrollment. We have to make that financially sound decision. And I would recommend that we handle the action on Morse Pond School first. And within a couple...
Point of order. This is, this agenda item does not discuss Morse Pond. And people keep discussing it. This is just about grade configuration.
Yeah, yeah. Mike, this isn't like your usual conversation. So, you know, things are...
That's fine, but I just don't like how we use Robert's Rule sometimes, and sometimes we don't. It's opened us up to open meeting law issues by discussing things that are not in the purview of that agenda item.
Okay. What's the order of the day?
You have to decide if that is the order of the day or the start.
The way I'm looking at things, guys, how many times in your lifetime do you ever vote on building schools and reconfiguring them? Don't you think you can throw away Robert's Rules to let everybody have it? As long as everybody can talk.
Well, then I would like to go back to my colleague, Ms. Nevin, who was interrupted about 20 minutes ago. Let her finish her thoughts.
Well, it's okay, Mike. I let you move on. But I think part of the confusion here, if I may, Ms. Madeiros, is we have two agenda items right after each other. One of them opens up a whole can of worms, because it's navigating the Future Together proposals. And the other one is just Lawrence School grade configuration. Because they're both on the agenda, my read of it, and maybe I'm wrong, and perhaps our parliamentarian can correct me, but we have them both on the agenda. All cards are on the table. Any discussion is viable at this point, because these things are on the agenda and the entire can of worms is open.
Right. I can't see that anything that Katrina just said is not debatable, talkable right now. Okay? I mean, this is, like I said, this is millions and millions of dollars we're talking about. So anyway, Sue, please, and we won't have any more interruptions.
We won't. This is one school system. And this talk has to be considerations of everything. We've been dealing with this for over a year, and longer than that for some school committee members on this board. It's time to act now.
Okay. All right. So Katrina, did you want to finish what you started then, I guess?
Well, all right, fine. We're doing that. So we're sort of holding on the ultimate hand vote, is that what I'm understanding? Until after we've had a conversation? That's fine. When we began, since this is now open to everything, when we began this process, this whole navigating the future conversation would not have been possible. We could not have released this to the public. We would not have been having this conversation if we, as a school committee, had not voted to release that initial letter. We, as a school committee, are able at any point to reassess what we're doing. Now, what Paul said, none of our talk about which three grades are in the school is going to jeopardize our application, because we said it will be three grades. In my understanding, even if we don't give up Morse Pond for some reason, we still can have three grades in Lawrence and move eighth up or fifth down. There is no reason, and I'm not saying that we should not give up Morse Pond. I'm not saying that we should not have eighth in the high school or fifth down. I have my own views. I'm just saying, none of this conversation jeopardizes in any way our application, because the application is in, it says three grades, we're moving forward. We, as a committee, can choose to discuss things that we've not discussed. It's been a long year of basically talking about the same things. I would love to have some new ideas on the table. In my view, we don't have to rush ahead with the grade configuration if we have until everything is going to be clear in December. The MSBA will come back, and we will know whether or not we are in the application process with them. We'll know whether or not we've been accepted. At that point, we can then say, town, here's Morse Pond. We're going to put these three grades into the school. We know that we're moving forward. Right now, the chicken has not hatched out of the egg. We don't even know what's going to happen. December is a month away. It's really not that long to wait. We're not jeopardizing the ability of our teachers to thoughtfully and skillfully transition to whatever plan we come up with. I, that's my view. And as a committee, it has been frustrating in the last year that we have, we waited and waited for the Building Needs Task Force to come back with a recommendation. Their recommendation mirrored everything which was in NESDAQ. NESDAQ mirrored everything which was in the navigating the future proposals. And here we are together again, almost as if we have not had the year we've had. And I would love for us to discuss what our chairwoman brought up tonight, building a new school. That's a great, interesting idea. Have we gone too far down the road of our application process? I don't know, Paul. Have we gone too far to then say we'd rather rebuild a new school?
No, not a new school. I didn't mean a new school. We have a new renovated school. We have a new entity, not a new building.
Okay.
No, no, no. I didn't mean that at all.
I'm not interested in jeopardizing the work and the progress that has been made. Personally, I have my own views. That does not reflect on the views of the committee as a whole. What has been frustrating is that I cannot, as an individual, understand how the committee feels on things. And we, as a committee, have not really brought in any new ideas. And so it's just so limited in scope that it feels like we're wearing blinders. And to rush ahead and say that we need to decide on Morse, we need to decide on the grade configuration, before we even know if we have been accepted, which is a month away, maybe a month and a half. It just feels silly to me. We have a month and a half to have that conversation after we know whether we're even in the process or not. And I would love, I would love if we could clarify when we make statements such as, I want more surveys. Does anybody else want more surveys? I want more input from the community. Does anyone else want more input? That way, we know how each other feels, and it's not a mystery. This is our only opportunity. We cannot discuss this in email. We cannot discuss this in person if there's more than two or three of us. We cannot have sequential conversations about this. We will violate open meeting law. This is the only opportunity. And this is the only time we have to bring in new ideas. We've had so many great ideas from the community, and none of them have ever made it to the table. This is it. This is the last chance. And if the committee as a, if the committee majority is not in favor of thinking of new ideas and is not in favor of having new input, I will stop struggling if that's the majority view. But I can't right now know if that's the majority view, because we never make it clear. And it's really, really difficult and taxing with the uncertainty, as my co-chair, my co-whatever, you said earlier. It's taxing, the uncertainty. And for me, the uncertainty is that we, as a committee, have not had clear enough conversations. So please, can we just be very clear? I understand completely where you are coming from. And I understand completely where I am coming from. If we can all just be very clear.
I can go. I can be clear.
Okay.
I'm not interested in having more forums or surveys. And, oh, and...
New ideas.
New ideas. So I actually, I have a completely different take on it, I think, than, you know, it's funny how you can be experiencing the same thing but have a completely different take. So the fact that the committee and Building Needs and NESDAQ, that so much of it, like you said, mirrored each other, to me, helps demonstrate that it's probably a good plan. And we could, because the possibilities could be limitless, I could see it never happening. Because if you take in every possible opportunity to consider everything, you might never get there. And I haven't, I haven't seen anything about the options that we're really considering that gives me substantial pause. I think that we're going to, as a district, be successful in implementing them if we just start. And so I don't know if that helps, but there's my two cents on those two topics.
Well, we're following around the circle. What are you voting there, Katrina? Kelly voted no, right?
Oh, are we voting now?
Can I just?
We haven't had a whole round.
Well, I didn't, the first time around, I didn't want to.
No, please forgive me, guys, but remember, this is an unusual way we're doing conversations. So Bliss, I'm sorry.
I don't want to jump in for her second.
Oh, no, 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 go for it.
So a couple of things. Professionally, I take notes. The Commonwealth has issued me a license to do that. When you brought up the meeting of August 19th, I knew I had taken notes as to how people casually voted or didn't vote. You are correct in saying that there were some conversation and discussion on that. You're also correct that we did take a show of hands. And Chairperson Terry asked for a loose-handed vote if people just wanted a presentation or if they wanted surveys or a forum or how we wanted. And it was a unanimous, all voted loose-handedly, that a presentation was enough. So I just want to clarify that. Yes, there was discussion. There was lots of discussion previously. But in the loose-handed vote that the chair asked for, a presentation was enough. Not denying that there was a conversation. But in the loose-handed vote, that's what it was. I do have a few comments to make about grade configurations. And I know that this is blurred lines, and I can respect Chair Committeeperson Haylen's comments about calling point of order. And I can appreciate Committeeperson Suze's Order of the Day. of order, and I can appreciate Committee Person Suze's Order of the Day, and I can absolutely appreciate Chairperson Mederos's comments saying that this is millions of dollars and that we have to, we have to forgive each other with some blurred lines. And I hear Committee Person Nevin's words also by saying that this is our only chance to have this conversation. And with that, this conversation has been going on, not just for the last year, but for many years. For those of us that have been hanging around and for paying attention, and not just recently, and for the people that are just recently paying attention and coming to meetings and really being involved, thank you for coming. Your attendance and your active participation is appreciated. This conversation did not just start a year ago, and it has mirrored, the Building Needs Task Force mirrored the NASDAQ report, which did mirror navigating the future. And to jump on Committee Person Welch's comments, that they're, it is a good plan, and that if we were to continue to keep having surveys, that we would have endless possibilities. I feel like we've been in this limbo of analysis paralysis, of which is a phrase used outside of here. And I don't really know how else to describe it other than we're stuck. We're stuck because we have options, and nobody wants to irritate anybody, and everybody wants to make everybody else happy, and we, as the elected committee, have been elected for a variety of reasons, and one being so that we can make decisions. I think that we've heard, over the last year, from people that want to talk to us, I think that we have heard some excellent conversation, I think that we have heard some excellent dialogue from parents, educators, from townspeople, be it emails, stopping you out in public, coming to public comment, presentations that the superintendent has given, you name it, we've heard it, and I appreciate it. I don't always agree with everything, and that's okay, and that's the beauty of having these conversations, but I appreciate it. I also appreciate Vice Chair Cohen's comments about the, you know, the loneliness and the half-empty school. I, I have joked, not joked, I have made comments over the years of how full schools were when I went here to Falmouth Public Schools, of which I did K-12 here. And it is because enrollment is down, and people are not having, families are not having five and six children as they once did. So there is something to be said for a half-empty school and for kids not getting everything that they need. You hear it at the kindergarten level, when the superintendent talks about enrollment and how, you know, cutting back sections or the delicate balance of children in classrooms. That continues on into high school. Having eighth grade at the high school has a lot of positives, and you can also see some negatives in there as well. I'm married to a data analyst, and he'll be the first one to tell you that you can find data on anything you want, whether it be keeping eighth in a sixth, seventh, and eighth level, or moving eighths to the high school. You will find positives and negatives depending on how you look at the data. Data is able to be manipulated. I don't think that we need any more surveys. I really don't. I think that we need to make a decision. I think that we need to get out of the limbo. I think that Committee Person Chair said it best when you mentioned that staying in this limbo has not been healthy for educators, for kids, for community members, for this committee. This committee is not healthy, and I think that part of it is we're in this weird limbo, we're stuck in this analysis paralysis. We have to make a decision. I think it's time that we make a decision. I think that, you know, Mr. Dart has been very clear as to what will strengthen our, our chances for getting the help that we need. I think that Mr. Lumping, Committee Person Lumping, also brought up some great points as far as having the natural, help me, what did you say? The natural, next, no, no, the actual, the next survey, not the survey, but the next analysis, that the, thank you, the feasibility, thank you. The next, the feasibility study that will organically happen with this process, I think that will help us. But it's a town decision, it's our decision. The town has elected us to make these decisions, and it's a hard one, and it's difficult, and not everybody's going to be happy. Not everybody's going to be happy on the committee, not everybody's going to be happy all around, but that's what we're here for. We have to do our job, we have to make a decision, and we have to be able to move on. Whatever moving on looks like, that's what we have to do. So those are sort of my thoughts on that.
So you're a no as far as need more time, right?
I don't need any more time.
Okay.
I also want to just highlight that we have to be fiscally responsible. That's also part of our job.
Okay.
And as somebody who has been on the Building Needs Task Force, as well as going to the previous forums and presentations over the last year, I, I am confident in making a decision.
Okay. Did, did you want to talk, Linda? I don't know who else wants to talk.
Um, just, just for clarity on positions, I'm committed to voting to take Morse Pond offline. I'm open to the grade configurations because of the evidence that we've heard from both sides. You know, nothing is persuasive, nothing is damaging. Both options are good. However, I do remain highly concerned about the undercapacity of the high school. So that's how I stand on everything.
Okay. I'm sorry, do you want more surveys or input?
I am of the mind of Committee Member Keith that I've heard enough, and let's get on with the show.
Okay. All right, Mike?
Thank you kindly, Chairman Mederos. So that August 19th meeting, just to, I don't take any notes, I just keep stuff in my brain, but I recall that, and I recall that we all asked Dr. Dorr for a presentation on her recommendation of grade configuration. The following meeting, we got that, and there was a majority, five or six of us, who wanted more focus groups, wanted more community input after Dr. Dorr's presentation. I've said this at many meetings before, and I'm going to say it again, we have not been accepted yet. This is a cart before the horse. As Ms. Mederos has said, the MSBA has templates, will help guide us. They've said themselves, we don't need to have this done prior to the application process. Again, this is cart versus horse, and I would like to say, the last year that we've discussed this, the majority of that year was me trying to discuss other options and being blocked at every single meeting. So we have not discussed this whole situation like we should. We've asked for surveys to be done, different ideas. I know that my colleague, Ms. Suza, had ideas that she wanted presented months ago. This, to me, again, this is just one person's thinking, this was a plan that was pushed on us, cart before horse, and every step of the way, this isn't about collaboration with the stakeholders, the teachers, the parents, this is just a way to get this done, and we have not been accepted yet. So before we do anything, we should see if we get accepted first. There's no rush. Chairman Mederos has said they will help us along the way. This is just, this was the plan in Plan A. It took me forever to get the T-ticket East Falmouth thing to be discussed. So we have not discussed all options. And again, cart before horse, we should not be voting on this unless we have an approval from the MSBA. Otherwise, we're voting on nothing because we don't have approval. Thank you.
Can I, I can still talk. Okay. So I was at the dentist's office with a North Falmouth parent last week, and so I said to her, because she had a fourth grade kid, you know, how are, you know, you've been watching what's going on in the school, and she said, "Well, yeah, but, you know, my child is never going to be affected by any of these changes, so I haven't given it real consideration." And that's what sparked in my head, that I don't think we've had people talking about that know we have the money, that it's their kids. So I really think, what in the heck does it matter if we send five more surveys? I'll read them all. I'll put my money, if we're going to spend all this money, and this is free, this is labor, this is bodies, this is not any money, it's information, why on earth, I'm going to say it again, and another thing I'm going to think about is people, this isn't on the topic, so maybe I shouldn't mention it, but, well, it is moving around. Every summer, I meet with my friends who graduated from Falmouth, they went all through the school system, and they talk about during their elementary years, if you lived in Woods Hole, it was tough when they were building a building, because you, sometimes I'd have classes in the wrecked building. So anyway, these, and this is 65 years later, they're still remembrating. One thing we got to keep in our heads over and over again, it's people, right? It isn't just money, it's people were moving around. So why would we not want to hear from a mother who said, "We have," I am not convinced that we've heard from people, enough people, we just have not heard from enough people. I believe we have 227 surveys. Is it just on the topic of grade configuration? Or is it what, I'm not, are those 227 surveys just on grade configuration? Even if it's all that, 227 out of the, out of all that we're going to be doing, if I need to take three more months to make a decision, then I'm a fool. But I think, I mean, that's what, I keep, I keep saying it over and over again, maybe I'm trying to push this on anybody, but, and I'm almost tempted to quit as your chairman if you're not going to really give as much time as you have before you make, if you don't want to listen to it, don't listen to it. But for, if one person on this committee wants to listen to it, I think they should have the right to read the surveys and listen to what people say. If the other ones don't, fine, when it comes time for the vote, fine. What are we going to do when we make the vote? I mean, we don't have anything we have to do to wait for that vote, but I mean it, guys. I, I, I don't know, I'll be quiet. I'm getting too emotional, I guess. Okay, so I guess, I don't know, how many, okay.
We just have a handful.
Yeah, Chris?
So my understanding is, so, so we're accepted in, and it sounds like the only thing that could potentially strengthen our ability to get approved is making a decision about Morse Pond, whereas the grade configuration, not so much. For me, you know, if, if there are committee members that want studies and forums, I'm in support of that, but I would say after, once we're accepted and it's approved, that then we're required to do the feasibility study. I feel like having that feasibility study would be a good tool of information for then moving forward with, you know, surveys, forums, and that may just show that, given our current district layout, that eighth grade needs to go to the high school, like, depending on, on what they choose as their factors, but I figure, they're being the experts, doing the full feasibility study of the district will maybe help illuminate a lot and answer a lot of questions that people may have. So, you know, I would, I would be in support of, you know, seeing how the process goes. So, so making a decision, if, if Morse Pond, if making a decision on Morse Pond tonight is going to help strengthen our chance of, of getting approval, to move forward with that, and then, you know, see if we are approved for being in the MSBA, and then moving forward with the feasibility study as the next step, and then moving forward from that with surveys or forums. So that's, that's where I'm in support of.
So I don't know if we made a decision or not. Did we make a decision?
Can I just ask a clarifying question, Terry?
Yep.
So I feel like we're talking about two different things. So we, we need to vote about Morse Pond, and we're also looking to survey folks about grade configuration. So are we, I think we need to be crystal clear as to what we're, we're round tabling voting on right now, loosely, casually, whatever. So Katrina, I hear what you're saying, that, you know, you, you want a loose hand, you know, you want to know where everyone stands. I just want to know what we're talking about, because, like, I am A-OK voting for Morse Pond right now, but I, I'd be remiss if we didn't hear from families as far as, like, what three grades should go in there. I mean, I know what I personally would like, and I've been pretty transparent on that, there's no mystery, but I also don't want to deny anybody either. So if we're just talking about Morse Pond, if that's what we're doing, then that's what we're doing. But if we're talking about, you know, we're all talking about different things here, and I, I just want to, I really just want to be clear, what exactly we're loosely, what are we doing?
You're the one that started.
Okay. The, the action item, or not action, the, the agenda item is a discussion of Lawrence School grade configuration. Because it was paired with a review of navigating the Future Together proposals, we've talked about everything. But the item that we're on, I believe, is reviewing the, just discussing Lawrence School grade configuration.
I'm not asking what item we're on on the agenda, I'm asking what you want.
No, no, no. I'm just clarifying what's happening right now for me, what I was asking. In regards to the Lawrence School grade configuration, does anyone want more input, staff surveys, family surveys, any forums? Does anyone need anything else before we can move to whenever the agenda is set to vote on that? That's the question. Does that make sense?
No. And I'm sorry. So are we, are we talking about, are we voting on surveys to take Morse Pond offline?
No, we're not even talking about Morse Pond.
Just, when it comes to which three grades will be in Lawrence School, we've already said we're doing three, Morse Pond is separate, when it just comes to which three grades, do we want more input from the community?
Okay. Okay. Is everyone clear on that? Margaret?
I just want to repeat again what I said, and I think it's really important, that it really doesn't matter, because I really have done research about grade configurations. What matters is that we have enough time for the people who are going to do this work to implement it, and if we do not make the decision, it is a problem in terms of, because the reason we're all here is for the kids. We're not here for buildings, we're not here for anything else. We're here for the students, and the best thing for students is that they have a good education, and that's what we're responsible for, financially, in terms of policy, in terms of making sure the superintendent does her job, and does it well. Okay? That's what we're here for. We're not here for anything else. Okay? I know a lot of people who have said to me they're going to come to meetings and they're going to talk in support of it. They never showed up. Okay? They never showed up. Now, I know there are people who disagree because they think, you know, I listen to everyone. Okay? I really have. I really have. And I've heard the concerns, and I am sorry for the concerns that, that people have. A decision has to be made, and I believe I heard Paul say tonight, that making a decision about Morse Pond is very important.
No, I'm not talking about Morse Pond.
Okay, no, I'm just saying, that's what, I wanted to say what I heard. That he said making a decision about Morse Pond is very important. Now previously, and I certainly heard Glenda said about, I'm using first names, I heard what Glenda said about an empty high school. And a high school that's empty, and, and how you can keep resources there that gives the students in the high school what they need. Now, I have some concerns about eighth grade, I've talked to Susan about, eighth grade going to high school. But it seems as if we can make a decision, and then people can begin to plan what they need to plan, that is what is to the best advantage of our students. And that is. And, and that's why I'm here, because I care about kids and I care about education. And the more we kick the can down the road, this has not been going on for years, it's been going on for 30 years that no one has ever done anything about it. It's about time that someone does something about it, and that's our responsibility. It's painful, it's hard, people are going to be hurt. I'm sorry, I'm sorry for that, I really am. But we need to do something.
Okay, but the road, kicking can down the road is only three months or so. I mean, you really don't, you need to have a decision made by the time you go to town meeting, which is April. You know, that's when you have to have a decision made, because that's what's going to be on the feasibility study request of $2 million. So, I mean, okay, maybe I'm, all right. It's not kicking it down forever.
No, but that's not what I heard. That is not what I heard from Paul, that's not what I heard in terms of supporting the application for Lawrence School. Now, maybe I'm hearing it wrong, maybe everyone else in this room heard it differently, but that is not what I have heard consistently from Paul.
Recognizing that I have caused this conversation to go on, and it's now 10 o'clock, my peer group of my children are the ones who will be affected. Those people who have four-year-old to seven-year-olds, like I do, are the ones that I'm wishing to survey. That's my personal interest in surveying more. The question that has caused us to be sitting here until 10 o'clock is, does anyone else want to survey that group or other groups further before we just, at some, whatever our next meeting is when we decide our grade configuration, before we get to that meeting where we're deciding it? Does anyone need more information? I want to survey, and we've heard from, I think it's mostly you and, and committee member Keith, that I am not certain of. We never did a hand show. It would just be done, yes. We just do a quick show of hands and put it to bed?
Sure.
Anyone who wants a survey and forums on Morse Pond configuration?
No, not Morse Pond.
I'm sorry, Lawrence, thank you. Lawrence configuration.
That wants it, yes.
Four. Not a majority. Can we move on to the next topic?
Great, that's all I wanted. It was a very productive conversation.
So that means that, that, that means now that the community, from this moment on, has no chance for, for any speaking to us.
They can come to any meeting and send us an email, just like always. I'm going to suggest that we move on to our next topic, because we've been on this a very, very long time. I move to close conversation.
We have been on a long time, but again, let's remember, it's millions and millions of hours.
But I made a motion that we close discussion and move on to the next thing.
Okay.
And nobody has seconded it.
I'll second that.
We can either vote on it, or we can just move on.
Oh, I'm not sure what we do.
We can either vote on, if you want to keep the conversation.
No, I don't.
Okay, then let's just move on.
Okay, so next we are going to act on taking Morse Pond School offline, is that right?
I make a motion that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to take Morse Pond offline, given the language that you provided us earlier.
Second.
Okay. Is there a discussion about it?
Mike Scott's home.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, I have two things. First, for clarification, Paul, if I could through you, Chairman DeRis, giving the, the, taking Morse Pond offline, whether we do that or not, does, does MSBA require that? Because there has been some confusion about what that does, and I understand the strengthening part, but is it required?
They're not, the MSBA is not going to tell you how to structure your school district. What they won't do is, is, so if you're coming to them for a Lawrence renovation, they're going to look at that renovation based on where this school is at today. If you have two grades in that building, that's what they're going to help, help pay for. If you, if you say to them, no, I want three grades in that building, then where are you going to take it from?
Okay.
And now, and now you're into the, the point where the sequential decision, now you're talking about Morse Pond. So you're, it's, Morse Pond's not going to be a one-grade building. It's, it's either going to be two grades or, or return to the town. So you gotta go through the sequence. So in order to get credit for three grades, you have to pull that grade from somewhere. That somewhere is Morse Pond.
Yes, I, I understand that, but, but I just, I guess to clarify, that does not have to get done before the MSBA application, that can be done after as well. And I also wanted to clarify, that was said earlier, that giving Morse Pond to the town is almost like a bargaining chip, which, again, I said this last meeting, and I'll say it again, that's not our role, and we don't know if we have the MSBA. I will be voting this down, this is a cart before the horse, over and over and over again. And I will stop talking, but I will be voting this down, and I would hope that other people would look at, we don't have to do this before the MSBA application, and Chairman DeRis is back.
Okay. So, um, do we need to go around the room? Yep, okay.
I'll go, do you want to start here?
Yeah.
Okay. I think I've already been clear that I, I support returning Morse Pond to the town. I feel very confident in that decision. I think it makes excellent fiscal sense. You know, seven buildings were right for a very long time, but they're not anymore. And we need to have our number of buildings and the size of our district reflect our enrollment. Like, somebody over here said, you know, no one disagrees that our enrollment has gone down substantially. I think we all accept that, and now's the time to have our, our number of buildings reflect that. And I think not doing so sort of takes advantage of the incredible generosity of our community that consistently supports us, and, you know, approves our budgets and, and stands behind us when we need a roof. I, I think not acting is, not only irresponsible, but it sort of flies in the face of that generosity. And, you know, honestly, I am looking forward to the thoughtful planning that will have Morse Pond be some kind of asset to the town, it's just not going to be a school. And I think now's the time to do that. Since I was running for the committee, I have thought that it would be an interesting and exciting possibility for the town to retrieve Morse Pond property. And so in general, I am in favor at the timing, though, and the process that we're following. I, I concur with Mr. Haylen, and I, I feel very torn, because I want to say yes, and I don't know if I should, because the process is not correct. So I'm hopefully can make a decision in 30 seconds or less.
Susan?
I am honoring the, the unanimous, unanimous decision of the task force, who had considerable discussion over probably nine or 10 months with representatives from all schools, as well as community members. And I feel it is the right thing to do with the declining enrollment and being fiscally responsible.
I want to honor this very vibrant school community, and this is a lovely campus, but Mr. Dart's presentation on the expenditures of the roof that this building requires and the other capital improvements, that was a very persuasive case that you made. So I will be voting, like my two colleagues over here, to take Morse Pond offline.
You know, when we started this conversation a long time ago, I thought it's going to be so easy to make that decision. And over the year, I've, you know, gone back and forth, is it the right thing, is it not the right thing? You know, it's hard when you've been somewhere, you have, you know, memories and all the things, and change is hard. I think it's the right time. I think it stings, and it's, it's a tough, it's a tough decision to make. Echoing committee person Nevin, the timing is tough, but I think that this is the right thing to do. I think that we have to be financially responsible. I'm also looking forward to see, seeing what will happen with this building and this property. And I hope to be a part of that conversation as well. Yep. It's, it's time to turn Morse Pond back over.
Margaret?
Yeah, having served on the finance main for a few years now, the expenditure of, of all of the schools is just unacceptable. Our town has been very generous, and, you know, Lawrence Pond, $650,000 just to keep that building going, despite what it needs, it's just impossible to provide it. We can't keep seven buildings with declining enrollment. And I know it's hard, and I know it's painful, and I know many people are not going to be happy. But I think it's important that we be financially responsible to the town, and we need to focus on how we can best serve the students in this community, to give them the best education we can. And I believe giving Morse Pond now will help that process.
Chris?
Yeah, I definitely, you know, can appreciate the gravity of the decision on, on community members and, and everyone in the community, you know, thinking about it from, you know, kind of the financial perspective, especially with, you know, consideration of cuts that could potentially be coming, and, you know, kind of increasing student populations that require kind of special assistance. I feel like the, the money that can be saved from maintaining the building and, and, you know, eliminating those types of maintenance costs can be put towards kind of the, the programming and kind of hopefully support staff for, for our students. And, you know, and also in terms of kind of reducing the amount of transitions between schools, you know, I feel like, you know, looking, looking down the road, the five, 10-year, 15-year mark, you know, it would be a better, better situation for our students, you know, in terms of thinking about it from the two-student perspective. So, yeah, so I, I'm in favor.
Okay, so some of the emotional ties and thoughts that people have expressed along the way are not where I'm at. I'm at where Paul's told us, the MSBA said, it increases our chances of getting that money. So they think it's a wise thing to do, to help us, because then the town really sees that we're being fiscally responsible. It's a concrete measure, so I say yes vote to take it offline.
Chairman DeRis?
Yes?
If I could make an amendment to add the words an administration building after the word school for fiscal responsibility, and take them both offline?
I don't think we're ready to, oh, he made a motion, don't I have to?
No, he asked for an amendment, and I started from him.
Okay, okay. I think that's a whole nother discussion, and I, Lori and I.
Somebody seconds it, we can discuss it, right?
I think it's.
I think it would violate open meetings.
Yeah, it's way out of the realm of things, right? And just as an aside here, Mike, last night Lori and I were at the Selectmen's Building, and they asked us about it. So they're thinking about it, but it shouldn't be part of what we're doing now. I mean, I don't think it legally can be, okay?
Future, I'm asking.
Yeah.
So next agenda, we'll discuss offline the administration building, that'd be great.
Well, I don't, okay, you could make that suggestion, whether it happens or not, we'll see. So are we done with all the people's voting now?
So have we voted?
Did it carry?
Katrina didn't know that.
Oh, I thought we were, I thought, okay.
I neither did Mike.
Okay. So now we have a motion to, did somebody make that motion?
Yeah, I made it.
Kelly made it, I seconded it.
She seconded it.
The next thing in the step would be to vote.
We need to vote.
And that's what I just asked to do, didn't I?
Yeah, Augusta.
Yeah. I just asked to vote, okay.
Let's, yeah.
So do we start with Mike?
Haylen, no.
Okay. Kelly?
Nevin, yes. Augusta, yes. Owen, yes.
Madeira, that's me, go ahead.
Moskeith, yes.
Suzie, yes.
Lumping, yes.
Madeiras, yes. Okay. Next, we will have a first read on policy IKF, so Lori can talk to us about that.
So this is the conditions to receive Falmouth, and I'm actually going to turn it over and let Sonya talk a little bit. So do you want to review that one for us?
Sure, thank you. Just under a year ago, we had presented a revision to you in response to the ballot question from last November when the MCAS was removed as a requirement for graduation. And we had to shift to make determinations internally within the district about what would count as competency determination at the high school level. We are coming back to you this evening with this first read, because then over the summer, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education released guidance, followed by the Association of School Committees releasing model policy language, and then interacting with the working group of assistant superintendents through the Association of School Superintendents. We've had a variety of information helping to shape this policy revision, and then working with a very thoughtful team in district, partnering with Mary Gans, with Sandy, with the number of Falmouth High School administration and our department heads, we offer you this revision. Again, largely shaped, you can see that there's about a page and a half that struck through, and then all of the new information largely sourced from the model language. Really, the only places that we could personalize it were the specific courses from the Falmouth High School program of studies that we're using to count as a competency determination. And then just clarifying what our course passing criteria are. And you can see there's a specific entry there for additional considerations relative to students with disabilities, our multilingual learners of English, and then there's also for late-enrolling students, and then the student body at large, an appeals process that was designed.
Okay. So we're not supposed to act on that, but does anybody else have questions?
I just have a quick question. So I was looking at the course requirements, and in my memory, or at least when my kids were there, there was a requirement for like the ninth grade STEM class.
Yeah, the ninth grade STEM course.
But that's not in here, so is that not on the form anymore?
No, that's a semester elective, separate from the biology. So the other part about the courses that can be required, there has to be an alignment to the courses or standards that were assessed at the time of the 2023 MCAS administration. And our STEM class was not the whole year class by which we based our biology curriculum, it was in addition to, it was a semester-length elective. And we've also. And we've also since revised that curriculum, and there's a menu of options students can take.
So it's no longer that particular class, they can take other things as well.
Yep.
Got it, thank you.
Katrina?
I have two, a few quick edits, they're all the same. On, under English Language Arts, there's all these bullet points, and then mathematics, and then it goes on to science and social studies. It should say, I believe, approved by the principal or their designee. At the end of each of those, it says of their designee. So I just wanted to catch those, there's four of them. And then I had a quick question, the footnote, I don't know what page that is, page three, maybe, I guess. The footnote that talks about the equivalency being about proficiency versus mastery, and the state is requiring that you refer to mastery, and there's a definition of what that means, and then it says that we in the district use the term proficiency. And my question is, is that, does that imply in some way that we're requiring less for our students than the state is, and also is that similar in some way to the grading changes we made to the K through four, where we went from exceeds expectations to meets expectations? What's the deal there?
So to your first question, no, not requiring less, I think, than relating to your second question through the work that we did largely in the four-part series of the Family Grading Advisory. We spent some time talking about terms that were synonymous, mastery, proficiency, right competency, and made a decision that the specific language we wanted to use to talk about grading practices was proficiency. So in the context of the policy, we're required to use the word mastering. However, you know, when we're talking about it more broadly and relating it to the work that we have been doing around grading, proficiency is the chosen language.
Okay, so they're synonymous with each other. Thank you.
Okay. So we don't take any action, it's just a second read.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more, there was one more.
On BDEH?
On this one, yes. I was just wondering, all of this struck-out language, and I looked at this on the computer, so I don't know my pages anymore, but in general, the language seemed old. And when I, there was a reference to a website about the Partnership for 21st Century Skills and 21stcenturieskills.org, which no longer is a website. So I was wondering, when's the last time this language was updated? Because that was 2002, that website was made.
The, the overall graduation, so last year, we opened this up and presented it just for the piece about competency determination. I would have to go back and look, I know part of it was, we had done the comprehensive policy review, but the detail specifically around graduation requirements has been, has been a little bit longer because we had updated it to match MasCor when MasCor was introduced at the state level.
Okay. So we're done with the graduation policy? Okay, so the next item is a second read on BEDH, public participatory, participatory school committee.
So the only suggested change that was made was changing the word citizens to community members, and that-
Thanks, Kel.
That has, now, the policy subcommittee revisited it, they accepted that. And so that's the only change to this policy that's made, and that's marked in green so that you can see that that was made.
I just love the green because it's also made it easier to look at all the other policies, too.
Thank you for that.
Thank Mary Gans for that, actually.
Thank you, Mary Gans, for green.
Okay. So the next ones are to act upon. Does anybody want to comment on any of these bulleted? We've already-
This is our second read.
It's our second read.
We never had a first comment round.
Right, we had a second read because we didn't have a first comment round. So does anybody want to make any comments on any of these policies?
Of course I do. Can we vote on them separately? We have done that in the past.
We usually do.
Yeah, okay. So, sorry.
Could we?
I'll make it quick.
No, could we bump out the ones, no, never mind, go ahead.
Paula, BDR, I'm wondering why are we removing the Technology Advisory Committee?
Because it no longer exists.
Oh, it's been disbanded.
Yeah, we've changed, changed the focus and the structure. We've moved on based on their recommendation of what, what needs to be the next focus, which is around AI. And so we've restructured the conversations to make sure that it is broader discussions at each building.
I thought that was a pretty longstanding committee.
No, I, I created it when I came a few years ago.
Can I make a joke? Did Margaret flunk off of that one? I'm sorry, Margaret.
It's like four o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, yeah. It's good because I insulted you, Margaret. I insulted you, I'm glad you were asleep.
I can tell you what 4:00 AM looks like.
The fundraising, gift solicitation, raffles, those two, the, the questions are basically, first of all, are staff going to receive really direct instruction on how to follow this policy? Or like, they'll, they'll be alerted that it's been updated? Yes, okay, just wanted to make sure.
No, no, we, I just want to make sure you're directing it to me.
Oh, sorry.
I've already, we've already started doing the protocol, a guidance document for both the booster clubs and the PTOs. So that's, the raffle piece is specific to that.
Okay, and then in reference to JJE, student fundraising, there was some mention of families having different resources, and the differences should not be highlighted by school activities, including fundraising. And I just wanted to draw attention, my, my own experience, my daughter's experience with the Scholastic Book Fair was exactly that, actually, and I don't think it was intentional. And I'm not sure if it falls under this policy, but the Scholastic Book Fair, children are allowed to bring money in and go down during class time and buy things, and then come back to the classroom with tantalizing items that may be out of reach for their classmates. And it caused a lot of feelings of shame and embarrassment for my daughter and several of her classmates. So I just wanted to ask, I guess, is that the kind of fundraising activity that's meant here? Or is it PTO activity?
So PTO and this student fundraising is different. That's, it's a good question, and I don't know if you want to pull that from voting tonight? We could do another read on that and put it back to the, the policy sub.
Okay, okay.
Just to be, I just, I want to read them all very closely because it's actually a good question, Katrina. I do not take that that one, because the PTO ones are separate, but I do want to make, just be clear on it before we vote.
And then, of course, I have a comment on JICA. I took a substantial amount of time last night to review on the MASC website, Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They do not have a comprehensive list of all districts in Massachusetts. They have 272 districts listed, that's not all of them. I don't know why they're not all on there, but in general, what I'm saying is that there is a policy website, on the MASC website, where you can go in and look at the individual policies of those 272 districts. I went and looked at whether these districts had JICA. Eighty of them have it, just exactly as written, of those 272. Two of them took the time to refer to please look at the handbooks, and one of them specified no hats. So in general, of those 80 people, 80 districts, just took the language, language exactly as it was written. Seven of them did not have the policy at all, which to me implies maybe they didn't update their policies when that was added, and so they didn't add it in because there was nothing, there was no JICA.
I'll just comment on that, I mean, this policy's been around a long time, so I can't imagine that people hadn't gone through, I mean, not all, you don't have to accept a mask, just so you know. A mask is a mask model policy, districts can accept them, not accept them. When we went through the review eight years ago, we did not take every policy and put it into the policy manual.
Okay, that's good to know. And then seven of the districts had their own very specific policies that prohibited like gang symbols, explicit violent, distracting attire, which incidentally are really problematic language. A lot of it specified gender-related, most of it directed at women and girls wearing specific clothing and attire that was revealing. So there were seven districts that had what I saw as really problematic. The point I'm trying to make is that we will be very different from those 272 districts if we choose to replace the language with please look at our handbook. The language is there for a reason. It is, of course, up to the committee, and I do get the sense people would like to move on and that we're going to vote to remove it. But if we remove that protective language, we are going to be one of only eight out of 112 districts that did so on purpose.
But against that is, your handbook is a legal document. It's, so that legal document has that policy in it. So our policy, normal procedures are, if things are in the handbook, they're just not in our policy. And that's why maybe different schools, I'm sure, I'm not sure, but I imagine a lot of schools have that policy. It's just where it is kept. Our policy manuals are cumbersome enough, so if we have things in our handbooks, and this, this item here is not to change any of it, it's just to move it.
No, that's not the case in my understanding. JICA will be removed, that language will be gone, there will be no protective status by, in our handbooks. Those, that language is not in our handbooks, we voted to remove all of that from our handbooks last spring. This is the last remaining incident of this language.
Oh, I guess I misunderstood.
And so if we remove this, it does not exist anywhere, and we will be, like other districts, seven of them, several of them mentioned, please go look at our handbooks. In addition, some of them took the time, like Somerville, Cambridge, Worcester, Woburn, to quote a few, really took the time to elaborate, they had this language, and then they built out and added their own, which was even more protective, specifically about gender identity. They really built it out, they had specific things about, please don't call out someone's attire in front of their peers, make sure that you're on equal footing, they took a lot of time. What I'm saying is that if we remove this, it is the last incidence of this protective language anywhere, and I think it is not a good thing. It indicates, in my mind, that we are not invested in protecting our students' rights to express themselves. So having done that research, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that it will be gone. And that we would have to have a local statute, bring it to the town, warrant through a process, to get the town to vote that they would like to accept it, at which point we will be mandated to put it back in. So removing it now seems the fault.
Point, point of order, could you please clarify for me? This is the second read, and we are acting, and we've already established that it's past practice that we're taking these one by one, but that does not mean that we are discussing each of these, we are voting on each of these, so I'd like to-
We never discussed it.
But, but it's not on the agenda that we're discussing these, so we're, we're second read and act. So I'd like to recommend that we move to act on these, I make a motion that we act on these policies individually, as we, as has been our past practice. So I will call the question.
Can I ask to clarify? What is a first read if it's not a discussion? We never had a chance to ask questions about this at our last meeting. So this is our second read, as I understood, it was an attempt to make up for the fact that we did not have a discussion or ask questions at our last meeting. So in my mind, that means a discussion.
So then, my understanding is that you would refer it back to policy?
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we refer JICA back to policy.
We just-
Now that we know that that's the last standing example of that language.
Okay. That, to me, would be a good solution?
There was already, Vice Chair Cohen had a motion-
To call the question.
-to call the question. So what are we doing?
So we have to vote and pass that by two-thirds to-
Call the question?
To call the question, to, to move to go to voting to, for each of these.
I'm sorry, but you called the question on something that is debatable and discussable, and so I don't think that you are, you are arguing this.
Again, can we just send it back to policy?
Can we just take them one at a time and decide which ones are going to go back and which ones aren't?
Again, guys, sometimes we get caught up with the mechanics of it. So why don't we vote the ones that everyone is comfortable voting on, and we'll just send the other one back?
Is everybody comfortable sending it back? Or are we, is that?
Actually, I think we have to vote on that.
Yeah, let's take them one at a time and figure that out.
So we would make a motion, then send it back, and you'd have to get a second, and then it would have to be voted by two-thirds to do that, so.
Oh, right now? Well, let's take them one at a time.
We're still in discussion, there's been no motions that have been seconded. This is just open discussion.
I thought we were going to take a motion on each one individually, so.
There was, it was never seconded, so Katrina still has the floor, can still speak.
Well, I made a motion to move the question, and then we've just decided to just-
Yeah, I heard the motion, but there was no second, so that does not take away Katrina had the floor.
I'll second it.
Okay, and now we have to call a vote. How many, who, we're voting to move-
Well, actually, Chairman Dearest, don't we open the discussion first or not? Because this is a debatable motion.
Moving, moving the question is not debatable. Right, parliamentarian?
No.
Okay, so we're voting.
No, if a person calls a question, then you vote.
Right.
You don't have a motion.
Right.
It's not a motion, so call those in favor of moving the question.
All those in favor of moving to vote on each individual policy, basically moving on.
Espiral. Espiral.
Espiral.
Okay.
Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
I am confused, I'm going to abstain.
Welch, yes. Moving on means we-
I'm sorry, Chairman Dearest, are you speaking?
We're voting on- Moving, moving on, taking the discussion off and now starting to vote on each individual policy.
So we're still going to discuss each individual policy like we've been doing? It makes no, I, I'm still going to abstain because it makes no sense to me while we're doing this.
Okay, Welch, yes.
Nevin, yes.
Augusta, yes.
Cohen, yes. Moskeef, yes.
Yes.
Lumping, yes.
Yes, Maderas, so.
Okay, so now we're voting.
Now we're voting.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept BEDR as presented.
Second.
All right, is there discussion? I have to ask that because it's just a plain old motion, right?
Yep.
Okay, no discussion, all those in favor?
I, I got it.
Okay, Mike?
Hailin', yes.
Welch, yes.
Nevin, yes.
Augusta, yes.
Cohen, yes. Moskeef, yes.
Susan, yes.
Lumping, yes.
Maderas, yes. So passes unanimously.
Want me to keep going so that it's uniform? I make a motion that we accept GBEBC as recommended.
I'm in a second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Welch, yes.
Nevin, yes.
Augusta, yes.
Cohen, yes. Moskeef, yes.
Susan, yes.
Lumping, yes.
Maderas, yes. That motion passes?
Yeah.
And make a motion-
JJE, I think is what-
And make a motion that we move JJE back to policy. Oh, no, we can just not vote on it, right?
Well, the superintendent said she would, so I don't.
I just said we could pull it from voting.
Let's just pull it from voting, we don't need to vote.
Yeah, do we? Less people disagree with it, I guess.
Oh, I guess, maybe they do, okay. And make a motion that we kick JJE back to policy.
I'll second that.
Mike, how do you vote?
Hailin', yes.
Welch, yes.
Nevin, yes.
Augusta, yes.
Cohen, yes. Moskeef, yes.
Lumping, yes.
Want me to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve-
That's how it's going to be, so.
Okay, I make a motion we approve KBE as recommended.
I'll second that.
Hailin', yes.
Okay.
Welch, yes.
Nevin, yes.
Augusta, yes.
Cohen, yes. Moskeef, yes.
Lumping, yes.
I make a motion that we kick JICA back to policy for further review.
Is there a second on that one?
Hailin', second.
Okay, so we-
Hailin', yes.
Okay.
Welch, yes.
Nevin, yes.
Augusta, yes.
Cohen, yes.
Melissa?
No, I, we've had so much discussion, I just wanted to go away, but it's okay, it's okay. I said no, I, I don't, I'm not in favor of sending it back to policy.
Margaret?
Yes.
Chris? Yeah, okay. Maderas, yes, so it's-
Back to policy. And the last one, I move we accept JQ as presented.
I'll second that.
Hailin', yes.
Welch, yes.
Nevin, yes.
Augusta, yes.
Cohen, yes. Moskeef, yes.
Maderas, yes. Okay. So.
Okay, Article 54. I'm happy to start us off because it's coming from budget, and I'm the one that asked for this. Okay, so the petitioner's Article 15 requests, and we have it at our seat, is requesting an outside, independent audit-
and we have it at our seat, is requesting an outside independent audit of the school department. And it was submitted by Raquel Russell. The Budget Subcommittee took it up. We've reviewed her presentation to the Select Board, and we had her PDF of her presentation at that time. We also met with FinCom to answer their questions before they made their recommendation. And then we sat down with Ms. Russell for a lengthy meeting to try and answer her questions and just address the, the article. In our Budget Subcommittee, we did vote to accept the Finance Committee's recommendation because, in our view, the article is redundant and not, because of that, not a good use of funds. That we felt, we have plenty of procedures already in place from the school committee level of having our warrants looked at every week to their budget process, and, and also the processes set up in Paul's office, plus, were already audited twice, once by the town and then once by DESI. And so, um, we have a recommendation from the Budget Subcommittee, which Sue thankfully wrote down.
Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Finance Committee recommendation of indefinite postponement on Article 15 and any related amendments.
A second now.
Okay. And I, I probably should...
I want to vote in favor, and I want to add one more. I could start bending, but I want to add one more thing. But if you have a warrant, you have to have a budget to go along with what your, your warrant is asking. And there is no budget for this.
Okay.
Um, trying to think, I feel like there was one other thing we talked about.
Okay, so I made a motion, did someone second?
I seconded it.
Yeah, I was in the discussion, I was trying to remember. I feel like there was one more thing we talked about, but I can't...
Is it safe to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I, I was gonna just ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm, I'm just, perhaps I'm just tired, but I'm confused. Why, if this is a motion for town meeting, why are we voting on it?
Oh, so, um, I requested this article because I think when, I anticipate when we get to town meeting, this hasn't happened before, where there was a school-related article that was not brought forth by the school department. It's brought forth by a petitioner. And I'm anticipating when we get to town meeting, someone is gonna ask, what's the school committee think of this? And if we haven't voted on it, we can't say. So I think everybody should weigh in on whether or not they would like another, a third external audit, so that we can respond to that request. I mean, I might be wrong, and maybe it won't come up. But if I was sitting in town meeting, I would want to know.
Don't you say... Well, not only, I mean, if someone has a warrant and requesting this, and they're speaking in favor of it, if no one speaks to you, sort of, why, I mean, the town does this already. It's done, this would be the third one. There is no budget for it. Someone has to speak to that proposal against it. I mean, that's what town meetings are about. I mean, you just can't have someone saying, we want this, and everyone say, oh yeah, let's do this audit where there's no money, and it's redundancy to the third degree.
Does that answer the question?
Just one more question. So is the, is the objection to this based solely on the financial outlay that the town would have to spend?
In our discussion, the objection was that we already do it. We already have two audits, one done by the town that they lead, and then a second through DESI. So why would we do it a third time? It seems like a waste of resources.
That was the basis of the Finance Committee's recommendation.
Because of the expenditure that it would...
And then it, it was a duplication of services.
Well, I, I think it's not just about the money, but also, I mean, doing an outside audit is incredibly time-consuming on our staff. And why would we want to put them through that unnecessarily? We have no reason to think that there's anything that needs review. I have full confidence in the processes that we have in place. Why would I want to put them through that again? It seems so unnecessary.
Can I speak? If I understand the process, if the warrant is brought forward, a person, we would not have to spend the money. The person would have to say where the money is coming from. And there is no money attached to this warrant.
Oh, I see.
Didn't she say to get it from, um...
It's not a matter of...
Free cash, so...
The second thing is, then the town would have to tell us that, that the warrant, that it has to be done. And so, they can't tell us how to be done if we don't have, if there's no money attached to it. Because once it's, once it's flown on, if I'm correct about the town meeting, then the town that tells us we would have to do an audit. It'd be difficult for the town to tell us they have to do an audit when they're already doing it.
So could, regardless of the, um, rules about warrants, couldn't we just say, though, that we don't, we don't think it's necessary? Are we allowed to do that?
Oh, we would have to vote on it.
No, I know, isn't that what we're trying to do?
Oh, yeah, 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 that's exactly what I'm trying to do.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you have any other questions, Linda?
No, no, this is just new information for me, so that's why I was asking.
I don't think it specifies where the money would come from or how much. Is that correct? I'm, I'm looking at the email version.
I thought she said it would come from free cash.
It says raise and appropriate. It doesn't say how much or from where. No, it does not.
Chairman DeRis, can I ask a quick question? Is this article still on the town meeting agenda? Because I had thought that we had gotten to communicate that the...
That was a different one, different article.
That was a different one, okay, just clarifying, thank you.
Okay, any other discussions or questions? Okay, Mike, how do you vote on this?
Halen, abstain.
Welch, yes.
Nevin abstain. Augusta, yes.
Cohen, yes.
Mostkeef, yes.
Susan, yes.
Lumping, yes.
Madiris, yes. So that's seven to two at last, right?
Yep.
Did I get it right?
Yep.
Okay. So hopefully we don't have trouble with our minutes now, because it's...
We shouldn't.
Just about everything else we had, but that's okay. It was the big items we were going over tonight, all right. So routine business would be approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Some of them, I'm on a roll.
Halen, yes.
Welch, yes.
Nevin, yes.
Augusta, yes.
Cohen, yes.
Mostkeef, yes.
Abstain.
Abstain, Lumping abstain.
Okay, Madiris, yes. Is that enough to pass it? Committee reports. Anybody? Kel?
Um, I already updated on the Budget Subcommittee meeting, and we're starting to talk about items that impact next year's budget. I also went to the Abutters meeting that Lori had mentioned. I was just curious, so I went. Um, and I thought it was really interesting. It was really just about the layout of the high-impact, high-efficiency septic system. If anybody wants to know, just call me, I'll fill you in. Um, but I also did take a picture of the layout of where the houses will be, um, in the properties of Abuts the High School. So if anybody wants it, let me know, and I'll send it to you. And negotiations is still ongoing. We're still waiting on FEA to ratify, and then we will be bringing, um, bringing it to the school committee.
Any other committee reports? Chris?
So Linda and I had our kind of community conversation, had open, open office hours at the library on the 18th. So we had one community member that came and stayed with us for the whole hour and kind of chatted with us. So some of, so I'm just gonna read some of the, the points that this, this member made. Just, uh, let's see. You know, in general, they were saying they weren't opposed to plans, but they had just questions regarding if, if Lawrence was deeded for education, and possibly what numbers could look like in the future. You know, if we're putting three grades at Lawrence, what it would look like in the future, if it would end up being a half-empty building then. They were just wondering if the, the money used for building is best for our kids, what the projection in enrollment versus the projection of birth rates, what we're doing as a district for keeping K to six kids. You know, this person mentioned kind of, uh, the school where their children attend has a very strong community. So, you know, kind of wondering what, what other elementary schools did in terms of kind of fostering kind of community with the teachers, community with families and kids. Um, they also mentioned, uh, their school had a good before and after-school programs. Let's see. Just had questions regarding the Early Learning Center, if it was best for students. Bear with me, sorry. Oh, um, kind of talked about the drop in enrollment, but at the same time, having an increase in students who need special services. So kind of talking about kind of the special education programs like TIPS, Connect, TLC, uh, all the services that are offered at every single school like PT, OT, ELL, speech, and reading. And then talking about whether, whether it's beneficial to have a safety or threat audit. Um, and then possibly all this doors at the elementary school possibly being fogged, having fobs, whereas not all the doors have fobs, but maybe some, maybe trying to make sure all of them do have fobs in case of, you know, students being outside or teachers being outside and during a threat, you know, being able to easily access the school through whatever nearest door they had. Um, and so, so from that, you know, we kind of grabbed kind of, I think, three main points where that would be helpful. And one of them was maybe when we go to each of the el, different elementary schools, maybe hearing about what the schools do for before and after-care programs, you know, how, what kind of programs they offer, just to kind of have a better understanding of how they kind of foster their community. One was related to fencing, kind of better demarcation, where it sounds like we've already, you know, Dr. Dour has already kind of addressed that. Um, and then the other one was maybe having a, a presentation regarding kind of all the special education programs that we have, and all the services that are offered at the schools, just so, you know, especially based on the superintendent's update in terms of, you know, federal funds for special education program not really being guaranteed, and maybe being under fire in the current environment, and kind of really putting it out there, like what our district does and, and what we have available at the schools, to kind of put it at the forefront, so people are aware of, you know, what, you know, what we do, and, and how important it is for our students. So that was kind of just a bit, I think.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Any other committee reports?
Go ahead, Katrina.
Um, I attended the VIPS and Parents' Alice Training at T. Chicket School. And it was really great, it was very informative. The police officers who led the training really shared a lot of information and answered everybody's questions really thoroughly. And I found the training itself, like the slideshow part of it, was really helpful. The in-the-classroom reenactment training portion was very disturbing. I didn't, I mean, I thought maybe it would be, but I didn't fully anticipate how jacked up my heart rate was gonna be for hours afterwards. And, um, so I, I had the teachers in my mind, because they're the ones who do that training. The students, it was made clear to me, do not undergo the same kind of, like, recreation of, of scenarios, which was helpful to know. There were a few things that came out of it that the, the police really did say several times, that they would, they wished that they did these trainings more frequently, and that, um, we, we do fire drills four times a year, and schools hardly ever catch on fire, was what they said, and we only do these trainings, um, yeah, knock on wood.
Sorry.
So like, it's not common that a school will catch on fire, but school shootings statistically are still not common, but why don't we do these trainings on par with the frequency that we do fire drills? Uh, I thought that was an interesting point. And they really would love to do more of them. They do them for all the organizations. Anybody who wants them is for not just schools, synagogues, churches, and anybody, really. I highly recommend it. Uh, the other two points that came up were, um, some of the parents and volunteers were asking about inconsistency that they had noted in how different schools and different grade levels are teaching what to do. And it doesn't seem like there's an age-specific way, there's not an age-specific across-the-district expectation for exactly what a first grader versus an eighth grader versus a twelfth grader should be learning. And the Alice Training is the same for all the staff. And then the breakdown of what they should do is kind of, seems like maybe it was up to the teachers and the building and the administration a little bit. So the inconsistency was one thing. And then also, personally, being in the room, you can put a kiddie chair into the door, the main door, and secure it, and it has a lock. Um, but the other two doors did not have interior handles. And so the advice there was to either barricade it or put a rope and pull it closed. But there were no ropes in the go buckets, and there was no rope in the classroom. And so, um, just for myself, going through that, it was very apparent that there was really no way to secure those interior doors. And, um, I wanted to just mention that because it was a little frightening if you didn't have the option to evacuate in the scenario. But overall, really, really great training. I recommend it highly, and I hope that they do more for parents and volunteers as well as staff.
Melissa, did you have one?
Um, I was just gonna talk about policy, um, that we, you know, kick, we brought things back for tonight. And I was also just gonna mention negotiation, that we're just awaiting FEA response, so.
Are there any requests for follow-up? Katrina?
I'm sorry, it's 11 o'clock. Um, the conversation about the administration building, uh, myself and Mike Halen have expressed interest in having a conversation about the budgeting and what pros and cons there might be to returning that to the town. I heard that the town has expressed interest in having that conversation. If the administration of the school district can be in that building without any renovation being necessary, I imagine any municipal body of the town could easily move in and use that building just the same. And if it saves us $50,000 just in operating costs, I think that is a worthwhile conversation, given our federal landscape and where we're at with all, all the other things we're considering. So, um, myself and Mr. Halen have requested that. Does anybody else have interest in that? Just for the superintendent's clarity.
Any support?
I mean, I'm in, yeah, yeah, I, I'm very, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, we'll take, go to that.